Well, good evening, everybody. And welcome to the Tuesday, March 22nd, 2022 meeting of the Edina City Council. We are in Edina City Hall Council Chambers. Before we start the meeting and call the meeting to order, I just want to remind folks of some things that Director Bennerott mentioned in her preliminary comments. If you're watching on cable TV or at edinamn.gov live meetings or at facebook.com/edinamn, you can participate in the meeting in the community comment portion of the agenda. There are no public hearings tonight where you would be able to call in. So if you want to address the council on a matter of concern to you, whether you're in the audience or in the virtual world, a matter that's not on the agenda or otherwise scheduled for a future public hearing, you can certainly call in. And that call-in number is 800-374-0221. And the conference ID is 617-4323. I'm going to repeat that one more time because it's not up on the screen. 800-374-0221, if you're listening in. Conference ID again, 617-4323. Give the operator your name, your street address, and your telephone number. Press star 1 on your telephone keypad when you'd like to get in the queue to speak, and Director Bennerott will bring you in to speak to the council. You're going to have three minutes to address the council. And I think Manager Neil will let you know when you've got about, when you hit the three-minute mark, and then we'll have you wrap up your comments. So having provided that information, I'm now going to call the meeting to order and ask for a roll call from our Clerk Sharon Allison. Clerk Allison?
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Jackson?
Here.
Councilmember Pierce?
Here.
Councilmember Stotens absent. Mayor Hovland?
Here. Next matter is the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thanks, everybody. We have a form of meeting agenda in front of us. Manager Neil indicated this afternoon that we wanted to reverse Items 7B and C. Is that correct, Manager Neil?
That's correct.
All right. With reversing 7B, I guess that would be amending the agenda. Reversing 7B and C is a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Senator Jackson moves. Member Pierce seconds the approval of the amended agenda. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving the amended meeting agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. And now we are at community comment in tonight's meeting. And so, again, 800-374-0221. Conference ID, number is 617-4323. We're going to see if anyone in the audience wishes to address the council first of all, and then we'll go to anybody that's standing by calling into the meeting. And we have someone that's approached the podium, one of our residents. And I'm going to ask him to introduce himself and give us his address, and then he can address the matter of concern for him with the council. Welcome.
Thank you very much, Mayor Hovland. I am Arnie Bigby. I've been residing at 7621 Edinburgh Way, Unit 2110 in Edina since 2005. Since then, I've served on the Edina Human Rights and Relations Commission for six years and on several other city-appointed volunteer groups. I know that galvanizing a population to move together in a strong direction can be challenging. Having respect for all people who live, work, learn, and play in Edina is a top-of-mind direction I would like our citizens to have. In the past, I've said Edina is a unique community that can be outstanding in the affordable housing realm because we have a great blend of leaders and resources. The same is true making progress on the issue of racism in our community. When I was on the Human Rights and Relations Commission, I received this button over here from the Department of Human Rights in Minnesota. I routinely get positive feedback from store clerks and passersby who see it when I'm walking around Centennial Lakes. I recently went to the Minnesota Human Department's website and found they have a new and different button. I asked if I could get a few to share with my friends. They asked how many I wanted, and I said five would be great, 25 would be just also very great, and 100 would be a miracle gift. Well, I've got 100. And my wife, Barbara Lovelore, is the one who always tells me, if you don't ask, you don't get. So they sent them, and I want to share them. I believe that everyone in Edina should have one of these new buttons and wear proudly every day wherever they go. Who knows? Maybe Edina will want to design its own buttons and provide one for each of our citizens. So I brought one for each of our council members and several for Scott Neal to have to share with his leadership team. And I'd like residents of Edina to be recognized by the message of inclusion that we display everywhere we go. And I'll just unveil the new one. So that's the new one. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bigby. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to approach the council on a matter of concern to them in the community comment portion of the agenda? All right, seeing no one coming forward, do we have anybody in the queue, Director Bennerott, that would like to speak to the council on a matter of concern to them that's not on the agenda this evening or scheduled for a future public hearing?
We do not have anyone in the queue to speak, but we do have some people on the line. As a reminder, if you would like to speak in community comment, please press the star or asterisk key, then the number 1 on your telephone keypad, star 1, that will get you in the queue to speak. Be careful not to press the pound or hashtag sign, as that actually takes you out of the queue to speak. I still don't have anyone in the queue. I would recommend we wait a minute or so before moving on. My clock shows that it's 7:10, so just turn to 7:11. I will come back to you at 7:12 or when I have someone in the queue.
Thank you, Director Bennerott.
No, sir. My clock just turned to 7:12, so you're safe to move forward with your agenda.
All right, thank you. What we usually do at the community comment is to have the city manager respond to community comments that were made in the prior council meeting. Manager Neil, anything that you need to cover with us this evening?
There is. Thank you, Your Honor. We had three folks last week speak at community comment. The first was Tim Eikoff. And if you'll recall, Mr. Eikoff had some concerns that he articulated around potential violations of the state open meeting law. He had a number of documents that he had received from the city through a data practices request. He had examined them and felt like there was some evidence of an open meetings law violation. He provided that documentation back to the city. We asked our city attorney, Mr. Kendall, to take a look at that information. He does not find evidence of an open meetings law violation. So Mr. Kendall has put that in the form of a report, and I'm sharing that report with you. And it is not privileged, so it will be a public document, and I'll share it with Mr. and Mrs. Eikoff tomorrow. They had a number of other concerns as well, just about city government communications and operations. I have offered to sit down with them and listen to their concerns and address them. They have declined that offer, at least at this point, but also expressed some interest in perhaps taking me up on it at a later date. So we are in some dialogue around that subject. The second person to offer testimony was our own city management fellow, Reece Karim, and she was here to thank you for the support of that program and to let you know that she was off to her new job in Northfield, which she started yesterday. And finally, we had a call-in from Julie Risser, and she was concerned about the crosstown pedestrian bridge. And we actually were able to answer some of those concerns, I think, almost the day after that. We know what their plans are now. We don't maybe know the time unless, Mr. Milner doesn't know the time, but we know that their intent, we know that they have some money identified from presumably the people that are persons that damaged the bridge, and that their intention is to fix that bridge in place and to do it rather soon.
Director Milner, any supplemental comment on that one?
Well, in that both agencies are looking for opportunities for additional funding to put a new bridge. We still, in both agencies, want a new ADA-compliant bridge, and we're looking for those opportunities.
Yeah, thank you.
And that's all I have.
All right. And I can supplement that, too. I spoke with John Solberg at MINDOT, who's on the tab with me, about this issue a couple of weeks ago now. And he mentioned that, you know, the two choices were to fix it at the cost of $500,000. I don't think they'd found the company that had hit the bridge yet and subsequently determined, I think, that there was insurance coverage.
Yeah.
Found out who had hit the bridge. There was insurance coverage for it. And so we're going to repair the bridge as soon as possible, or they are, their bridge. But to Director Milner's point, Mr. Solberg also mentioned that MINDOT is keenly interested in looking at replacing that bridge as soon as possible. One of the questions he raised with me was, do you guys have sufficient right-of-way on both sides of the bridge to be able to put in the kind of bridge that we need to make it ADA-accessible, which would be the ramping required? And so that's something that you would certainly know that I couldn't answer. I thought we did.
The south side, we certainly do. I would guess the south side, we certainly do.
We got park land on one side, and...
We feel we do. They did some preliminary layouts, actually, last year. MINDOT put a little bit of staff time into it and did some layouts on each side, and we, both parties, believe there is enough right-of-way.
Right. And they said their usual process was to engage the public and look at some bridge designs and hold some open houses like they've done in the past with us.
Correct.
But that would probably take about four years to get that done, was the word I got. So we can plan on hopefully a new ADA-accessible bridge, but it's going to be a few years before we get that done. But we'll get the other one operating again, anyway. Okay, good. That cause anything else, Manager Neil?
No, sir.
All right. And the opinion of the city attorney was related to the alleged violation of the open meeting law, related to a staff issuance of a masking order at Braemar Ice Arena, as we recall. Just to be clear. Okay, good. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, and there are several items on the consent agenda. Six L and M are going to be removed. Councilmember Jackson and myself removing L and M. Is there anyone on the council that wishes to remove any other item from the consent agenda other than L and M? All right, hearing nothing. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda or adopt the items on the consent agenda, all of them on the consent agenda with the exception of items L and M?
So moved.
Motion, Member Jackson. Second, I remember Pierce, that we adopt the items on the consent agenda in a single motion with the exception of items L and M. Six L, six M. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the passage of the motion stated, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. And then to item six L is potential approval of Resolution 2022-34, which would support the proposition of what's called "No-Mow-May," the No-Mow-May Initiative 2022. And Member Jackson wants to speak to that a little bit, I think, and call it out so that people understand what it's all about. Member Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So two years ago, when I was chair of the Energy and Environment Commission, I got a call from a couple, Rhonda Rota and Leonard Bernstein, and they said, we have this great idea. We're doing No-Mow-May. Can the city not fine us for not mowing our lawn in May? And I said, well, it's May, and I don't think we can get something passed through like that. And we talked with the city, and they weren't able to do it that May. And then the following May, the Energy and Environment Commission was working so hard on the Climate Action Plan, they weren't able to get to No-Mow-May. But this year, they did, and we're going to have it. According to the Bernsteins, the, so the principle is that at the very beginning of the spring, when your grass is growing, it fosters baby pollinators. So the bees and the butterflies are living in your yard, and if you don't mow, they have, a lot more of them have a chance to come to maturity. And they said, as a result of doing this, that they had the best yield in their gardens they had ever imagined, that it went up tenfold, the amount of vegetables that their garden produced. So it was really healthy for their garden and everything, but they did have to end up mowing it just right before they got fined for not mowing their lawn. So what this does is it puts a prohibition or a stay on the weed ordinance that says you have to be mowed to a certain height, and it puts that off until June 15th, actually. So the whole month of May and the first two weeks of June, if you register with the city, so we know you're not growing weeds in your yard, you're doing this intentionally, you don't have to mow your lawn, and you can help those pollinators reach maturity. And it's really exciting. I talked to the Bernsteins, and they're super excited. They want to help Tom Swenson and Grace Hancock do this, so they've got lots of energy. But it's a, it's a no cost to anybody except the cost of, the staff time to register to solve a problem, to help preserve our pollinators in this state. So I'm super excited, and I would like to move Resolution 2022-34.
All right. Member Jackson moves the adoption of Resolution 2022-34, support for the No-Mow-May Initiative 2022. Is there a second? Second.
So moved.
Member Anderson, seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of Resolution 2022-34, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. And that's, just to make it clear, it's all voluntary. If you decide you want to participate in this program, you've got to register with the city.
That's right.
We're not telling people, nobody shall mow your yard in May and June.
No, absolutely not. If you want to mow your lawn, you're certainly welcome to. But if you choose to participate in this, you register with the city at no cost, and then the weed inspectors know not to come around and find you for not mowing.
Okay, good. All right. Thank you for that. The next one is one that I pulled. Hold on here, I just lost it. We've had our city clerk working very diligently on establishing new precincts and polling places based upon some of the work that was done by the courts and the legislature on redistricting. And I think we wanted to pull this off the consent agenda because I think Clerk Allison wanted to address a few of the issues that were involved. And I think the League of Women Voters in Edina has also expressed the desire to better understand what we're suggesting and why we're suggesting it, and what our clerk thinks is the best thing for us to be doing. And she's got a short presentation ready at this point in time. Clerk Sharon Allison, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, thanks for having me this evening and for listening to my presentation. So this is about the 2022 redistricting and establishing precincts and polling places. So my recommendation is to go from 20 precincts to 16, and I'll go through some of the things that I considered in making my recommendation, starting with the Secretary of State's recommendation of 2,000 voters. Next, Hennepin County's recommendation of 2,800 voters with a 30-minute or less wait time. So this would be a floor of 2,000 voters and a maximum of 2,800 voters in a precinct. In addition to that, Hennepin County also recommended removing letters from the precinct names, and I have some of them listed in the presentation. That plays really a minor role in my recommendation. However, in removing those letters, that would have required us to renumber all the precincts. 1A, for example, would have become Precinct 1, and 1B would have become Precinct 2, and so on, until we would end up with 21 precincts. With the increase in absentee voting or early voting, both the Secretary of State as well as Hennepin County recommended that we take a look at the number of precincts that we have to see if we could potentially reduce them because we're expecting an increase in absentee voting. We have approximately, one of the comments that I've received is that some people felt that the polling places are too big or will be too big. We currently have probably about 11 polling places that falls within the 2,000 voters to as high as 2,500, with one that is over 2,500. And those polling places, they function properly and without any lack of service to the voters, without a wait time of 30 minutes. In fact, there isn't anyone waiting 30 minutes as we are currently structured. Other things that we're taking into consideration is the size of polling places. There are several polling places that are too small, and so I looked at moving to places that were larger and could accommodate the voters better. Weather or temperature inside of polling places were also taken into consideration. Some of the polling places do not have air conditioning, and in fact, several years ago, we lost a ballot counter because the gym was so hot. And so that was really important in making my decision. Going down to the schools as polling places. The schools are ideal as polling places because of the size in the gyms. Not only that, they have ample parking, and additionally, the schools are now out of session on Election Day. So that makes the schools even more attractive to be polling places. We'll have fewer precincts to prep and manage on Election Day. We'll have fewer election judges to recruit and train. We'll have fewer election equipment to lease and maintain, less election supplies to purchase and store, and all of that equals a reduced storage space. The next issue that came up was the voter experience. How will this impact the voter experience? I think maybe we'll address the elephant in the room, and that is change, different. With redistricting, there is always a change. It is just to what degree the change is going to take place. This change, different, it is a challenge. Having to learn where your new polling place is, is a challenge. I get it. It is going to be confusing at first. It is going to be inconvenient, having to remember where your new polling place is. But this should not stop us from making changes. For example, one of the changes that I've made or recommended making is removing the letters from the precinct names. This was a recommendation that Hennepin County made 10 years ago, or actually more than 10 years ago. And at that time, the city clerk tried to make that change, but was told that it would be confusing for the voter. Again, I'm hearing that it will be confusing for the voter. I get it. I understand it completely. But we have measures in place to assist the voters in finding their polling place. And I'll talk about those changes in just a bit. Regarding voter experience at the polling place, it will be business as usual, with trained election judges providing high level of service to the voters or to their fellow residents. Voters will not see any noticeable change because, as stated earlier, approximately 11 precincts range in sizes from 2,000 to over 2,500 currently. The only thing that may be different is redirecting a higher number of voters to correct polling place. This is to be expected with this change. And for 2022, we will staff up to assist with redirecting voters. We'll inform voters by working with the communications team. We plan to communicate the change in the following ways. This topic was addressed in the late March episode of Agenda Edina. This show runs on Edina TV and is available on the YouTube channel. The segment will be posted on social media. We plan to include the 2022 precinct map in the May issue of Edina, Edition Edina. We will also have a special election issue of Edition Edina in September, and we'll include it as part of that. In July, Hennepin County will do a postcard mailing to all registered voters, telling them their precinct, polling place, and location. We will do an informational mailing on the referendum in the fall to all mailboxes in Edina, and we will include the precincts and polling places in that. We will post on social media and Nextdoor. And finally, our website. In addition to our website, which I will show you in a bit, we are setting up a microsite on the referendum, and this site will have information on precincts and polling places Pulling up our website. So this is a website that residents can follow. Here is the website address, and if a resident goes to this website, they will see polling place changes, redistricting. And when they click on Find Your New Polling Place, that will take them to this page. And here, where it says Ways to Find Your Correct Polling Places, we have several options where they can start finding their polling place. For example, if they were to click on See the 2022 Precinct Map, it would bring up this map that you're seeing right here. If they click on this map, it will make that map a little bit bigger, and a resident can check to see where their polling place is. If, for example, the resident is in Precinct 2... Let me enlarge it for you. So if a resident, for example, is in Precinct 2, they can then scroll to the bottom of this PDF and find Precinct 2, and it will tell them that they are voting at Highlands Elementary School at 5505 Don Castor Way. In addition to... Let's do that again. Sorry, I think I closed out of the website. In addition to the PDF, they can also go to the Secretary of State's website, Polling Place Finder. And right now, the state is not expected to have their information updated until, on the website right now, they're saying mid-May. I've heard also potentially mid to late June. And so once on this website, I would say probably mid to late June, a voter will be able to enter their zip code and find their polling place that way. In conclusion, this is not a major departure from how we've previously operated, and it is in line with recommendations from the Secretary of State as well as Hennepin County. Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you, Clerk Allison. Does anyone on the council have a question for Clerk Allison? Member Jackson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So thank you, Clerk Allison, for this explanation. I think this answered a lot of the questions that we've been hearing. I really appreciate that. I especially appreciate you spelling out what the parameters you were given from Hennepin County and from the Secretary of State. I know we got at least one email, you know, looking at that and wondering it. It's your expectation that no one will have to wait over 30 minutes to vote, and that it should be business as usual based on past voting patterns and the size of these precincts and the size of the rooms. Is that correct?
That is correct, Councilmember Jackson.
Okay, thank you. One of the questions I had was... One of the questions I had was the timing. I think the census data was slow to come out this year because of the pandemic. Can you sort of, in years past, have we had a public comment period when we've done redistricting? Do you know?
We have not because this is more on the level of an inform. It's not a comment process for Edina.
Okay, okay. Well, thank you. And I do appreciate you going into more detail on this because I think when you presented to us in the work session, you answered a lot of questions for us. But this puts it on a broader platform, so thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Clerk Allison. I think the rest of us are good. Thank you, Member Jackson, for asking those questions. There's a Resolution 2022-31 which establishes these precincts and polling places as recommended by our city clerk. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2022-31?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion by Member Pierce, second by Member Anderson to adopt Resolution 2022-31 which establishes our new precincts and polling places as recommended by our city clerk following the guidance of the Secretary of State and Hennepin County. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of Resolution 2022-31 say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Carried. Now, we're going to move on to the reports and recommendations portion of the agenda. We've got three matters in that portion of the agenda this evening. We reordered those, but the first one is staying the same, and that's Resolution 2022-35, which is something that we see at every meeting, and that is involving donations to the City of Edina for various purposes from companies and residents and nonprofit organizations. And we have such a resolution in front of us this evening. Is there a resolution, is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2022-35 which would accept certain donations designated in that resolution on behalf of the City of Edina?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion by Member Jackson, second by Member Pierce to adopt Resolution 2022-35 which would accept certain donations on behalf of the City of Edina designated in that resolution. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of Resolution 2022-35 say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Carried. Just a quick notation, all of the donations this particular reporting period are to the Park and Rec Department. Many of them for the, most of them for the Braemar Memorial Fund, and then one for some signage at Centennial Lakes. But the folks donating to the Braemar Memorial Fund included Donald Millard, former Mayor Dennis Metzold, Janet Dollman, Jeanette Miller, Marlese Bronson, Michael Welbaum, J, that's the initial J, Turnbull, Judith Standerson. And then the Edina Model Yacht Club had a generous donation to the Centennial Lakes Park signage effort. And they, of course, have a wonderful time down at Centennial Lakes in the summertime. So that, thanks to all those donors, and their names will be posted on the website. And then the next matter before us this evening, Director Teague has, and that is a sketch plan review for 4404 Valley View Road, which many of us know as the old Burley's Hair Salon site. Triangular piece of property down there that was part of the additional, the initial Edina Flats project, but has not yet been developed, and we're going to hear a proposal on it this evening. Director Teague?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Members of the City Council. I'll just do a quick presentation and then turn it over to the applicants. As mentioned, you're familiar with the site, the old Burley's site. It's Zone Plan Commercial District. It's part of the Valley View Wooddale Small Area Plan area. Note that there's a two-story, 30-foot height limit on the site. As mentioned, it was part of the Edina Flats, but the site remains vacant today. The Burley's salon was removed. It was approved back in 2018, 2019 for a four-unit condo building with underground parking. What the applicant is proposing here is to, instead of those condos, do townhome row-type style housing with access off of Oaklawn and Valley View. Just a quick comparison from what was approved. Generally, that there may be a little bit more green space compared to what was approved. Setbacks are a little bit more generous. Note, on the North Lot Line, there was a five-foot setback. Proposed is seven. The, along the street, it was 31 feet on Oaklawn. And as proposed here, it's about 36 feet, and about the same on Valley View. It is a little bit tighter to the daycare to the west with the garage located here. These homes may look familiar to you. These were the same style housing that was proposed up on France Avenue where we had that rezoning last year. This is the same concept, same builder. Quick rendering. So what this would require would be a site plan with variances. That previous plan received variances for the setbacks. So with the new plan, we would need to revise that site plan with the variances. With the density, again, this was part of Edina Flats, no change there. This is viewed as a gateway into the Valley View Wooddale node. There's a large green space on the corner. We could work with the applicant and with the city as well, too. The Small Area Plan talks about a gateway sign. As you move into the node, we can look at that as part of a formal application. One thing that the applicant is looking for some feedback on is in regard to building materials. So because this is zoned in the Plan Commercial District, we do have a building material requirement for brick on the first level. They would consider asking for a variance as part of that request. So they'd like a little feedback on your thoughts on that. So I will stop there, answer any questions you might have. And the applicant, Rebecca Remick, is here as well.
How about Mr. Zbarth? I guess we're still having some difficulties. He was going to be here virtually, I think, from Perkins and Will.
That's right, he was.
He will not be available. All right. Yeah, all right. Thank you, Director Benarot. All right. Ms. Remick, come on up and tell us about what you're thinking about for use for that property and the issues the council needs to be thinking about.
Well, thank you. I just kind of wanted to mention in general the market that I see that I think that I'm delivering to with this product. It's a number of people that are calling in to me wanting, they're Edina residents. They want to stay in Edina, and, but they want to downsize. They want to downsize in price, and they want to downsize in square footage. Land price makes it really hard for them to downsize in price. Or the land price makes it hard for them to downsize in just overall price. So splitting the land and giving them 2,500 square feet. It's on three floors, but they will have an elevator. So it makes it, and there will be an HOA so they can, you know, walk away from it and go somewhere else for the winter and be able to maintain their home. It's a product that there's a huge need for in Edina, and I hope that I'm able to get approval to be able to give it to them.
All right. And then why don't you talk a little bit about the building material issue? What you were thinking about in terms of using what types of building materials?
Well, it's more of a modern kind of concept. If you saw the look in a brick, I mean, if you're going to tell me that I have to do brick, I'll do brick. But I would rather not from an aesthetic standpoint. I think people in general would want, I mean, hardy siding is, you know, has a very good warranty on it, and it's very appealing if you do a smooth, hardy siding, you know, and give it the look that's in those renderings versus the brick look.
So sometimes we'll see proposals that, you know, generally contain materials that I would say that this council appreciates would be brick or stone and glass and metal and...
Yeah, so, I mean, I'm not opposed to you using that. There is a huge amount of cost right now that goes into building. Brick and stone probably double in cost, and I'm wanting to give it, put it in a price point. I understand everybody usually laughs at me when I talk about this, but they're wanting to downsize from, let's say, a huge 8,000-square-foot home. That's 1.8. They're fine spending 1.5 or 1.3. For me, that's what I'm talking about, is this product. But still, 1.3, 1.5, those type of materials will just push it higher for them and maybe push it out of the ballpark. I'm trying to get it, trying to use materials like just what I'm suggesting in my homes when I'm helping people value engineer their homes that I'm building for them. I'm trying to give them materials and options to be able to get them into, you know, a somewhat lower price point, but still have a high-quality standard of home. And so I think they would still sell. It's just going to push the price point higher than what I would want for them.
All right. Well, let's, are you done with your portion of the presentation? We'll switch over to the council members and ask them to provide you with some guidance and some comments on their thoughts on what they're seeing. I'm going to turn to Member Anderson first.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of things. I don't know what our technology capability is at this point.
I can do it.
Thank you. Ms. Remick, how are you tonight?
Good, how are you?
Thanks for being here. But what I did was, I spoke with Susan Lee, who is one of the leads on the Small Area Plan initially. And she had some thoughts, but mostly, she sent me some, I think, interesting pieces, some of which I already have sent you, which are the consultant's findings. And I don't want to spend a whole lot of time on them. But just to flip through very quickly, let's see. This is actually, this 4.1 slide right here is actually the work of the Small Area Plan or found on the Small Area Plan. So what we see here on number six is the Burley's site or what was acknowledged as where your proposal is. I wonder if we could, and that is designated, this color code there is designated for certain purposes, among them are residential. The idea of the consultant was this could go any one of a number of ways. And as we zero in on your proposal, then we see row houses are one of the ideas there that could work very nicely. If we go to the next one there, like the Benarot, you see that this is actually the preferred frontages from, by context area. And again, when we come down to this particular parcel, you see that how the immediate area is shaded. And so what you see is called for there would be a doorway, a stoop, a shared entry, a porch. Common lawn is discouraged there. You're not really proposing that in any event. But you begin to see what the consultant and the group studying it was recommending on that space. If we go on to the site-specific guidelines here, you see that the area circled is D where the site that you're proposing is. And so that discusses the eastern gateway. And there's been a reference to that earlier here in some discussion at the Planning Commission as well during your proposal. They were thinking in terms of a sign, which is not necessarily what was being recommended initially. The gateway concept there was the appearance as you approach it down Valley View. And there's nothing wrong with a monument or sign denoting the area and indicating that as a form of welcoming. But Slide 4, what that would show is that what you're really looking here at is the, an idea of a row house. This is not what you're designing or proposing. But this row house, the fourth one here, actually turns onto Oaklawn. And so that the fourth unit on that site creates the, what was seen as the eastern gateway, so that it melts into the neighborhood as it turns around that corner down onto Oaklawn. I think that's a good idea, useful idea. You're not proposing this in its precision, but it's just something that I think it would be a good idea to keep in mind because that sense of flow into the neighborhood could be very, very useful. Couple of other things, I guess, that I know. Thank you very much, Director Benarot, for showing that. I have some other stuff here, but we won't worry about what the consultant said so much tonight. The thing that is concerning to me, and you, we had an interview earlier on the phone, and the thing that is of some concern to me is just the setbacks. We're kind of, we're really, you're asking for variances all the way around.
But no different than what was approved back in 2018.
It's just that, on Valley View especially, that is some level of, if there's a way to pull back some there. You see, for instance, in the Small Area Plan proposal, when they talk about row houses on that site, they talk about taking parking underground. And so when you do that, and I know that's expensive, but when you do that, obviously, it gives you more latitude because you don't have those garage frontages. It gives you more latitude in order to respect, within a range at least, the existing setback requirements.
Yeah, and that's what makes it cost prohibitive.
I get it. I fully understand, and I'm sensitive to that. And so I'm just mentioning that, and I don't expect you to put underground parking in there. However, the sensitivity as well, though, to the setback variances, especially along Valley View, when, as we discuss the ability to walk and bike and the whole, the mobility aspect of it, and especially because you're looking towards age-restricted housing here, or at least age-restricted friendly housing. Aging in place is kind of what you're proposing, if I recall.
Yeah, it's interesting with Edina Flats, you know, that's the target market, and 13 out of the 15 did, was that market. But then there were two, there are two young people that are living in there, you know. So it's also an affordable option for somebody, too, who is not wanting to, or who wants a smaller square footage. And again, because it's sharing on that land, it makes it affordable for people to build just 2,500 square feet, kind of no matter what age you are.
Understood. And just mentioning that that's part of your proposal, is that your aging in place proposal, which kind of ties into the setbacks and asking for that kind of variance, especially on Valley View. Also, we push the, now, if you have an opportunity to turn that or even to create the appearance of a turn there, which allows you to move into the neighborhood more, that may not be as large a source of concern for the neighbor to the immediate north. But we've seen some email come in about that. So I just mentioned that tonight, given the sketch plan.
So you're wanting, you're saying you're worried about the setback on Valley View, but you want it further to the north?
I think that there's a level of concern being expressed because of the short setback to the north.
But not with Valley View.
Well, Valley View is my concern more than anything else. And basically because the walking, biking experience there can get very, very congested. It's a busy street. And so what I get concerned about primarily is are we going to get bikes on streets where we also have walkers? That jumps up at me.
From my understanding, and Carrie, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, but the Edina Flats that was approved back in 2018 was 16 feet. We've brought forward several different things that were very, a lot closer because we were trying to also work with people with the parking and the number of parking spots you have to have for the square footage that you have. And then there was that Planning Commission where a response was given to me that this four, two spots per condo was too much parking. So it's very confusing as I'm standing up here trying to work through some of this and figure out how to, I mean, because people are also very angry that that spot is staying vacant. So I'm trying to bring forward something that I think is a win for everybody.
And I think you're doing a very good job of coming, we're knocking on the door of that. It's a sketch plan review. I'm just giving you some feedback.
Yeah, thank you, because I haven't done one of these before.
Okay, thank you. And I guess the only other thing, and you heard this from the Planning Commission as well, the size, you know, if the size, if the footprint is smaller, then it's easier to observe the setbacks. And I do understand, I mean, pretty much your expenses are based by the square foot in building, and your profitability, your business model comes in there as well. I appreciate everything that you're saying.
And moving around on that main floor, we could, if we were, I didn't have to fit what I needed to on a main floor just for how people normally live today with their kitchen, family room, you know, mudroom with the parking there. It's the main floor that's really directing kind of the up and down of it, too.
Sure. Okay, well, those are my only comments.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Member Anderson. Member Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, good evening, and looking at this plan. And we had some interesting comments about the relationship with the house to the north. And I'm looking at Unit W2. It looks like that part that sticks back is just garage. Does, is there living space over the garage on Unit W2? Or is that just?
I don't have W2. Where is it?
That's the second from the west. So you've got the one that's got its own driveway on the west. And then Unit 2, yeah.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Has the driveway come in? Has the driveway come in too? So it's west 2, and then you've got east 1 and 2.
There could, yeah, so that on the back, it would be, it could be a deck.
Okay.
Above that garage, yes.
Okay.
But not everybody might want a deck.
So it's either a deck, or it's air.
Correct.
Essentially, it's not living space. It's not windows looking into the.
No.
The concern was that it's so close that it would be looking into the neighbor's home. But I think the part that's adjacent to the neighbor's home is driveway, and that's really the closest that, that you get to that other home.
Right, yeah.
And so.
And it is interesting, too, right, because on a normal city lot with houses, the, it's a 12-yard side yard setback, and typically we do five and seven. So typically on a normal, you know, city block, we are either five, it can even closer at five or seven is pretty typical.
So that, that was my next question.
Yeah.
Was the height and setback compared to a single-family home is very similar. Is that correct?
Correct. It's one foot under a two-story home, or the height limit for under 75 feet in width of a lot.
Mm-hmm.
And then, yeah.
So if a single-family home were to be built here, would it, is it, and maybe this is a question for Mr. Teague, if this was a single-family home, would the setbacks in height be in compliance with what's, what would be to the north there in the single-family neighborhood?
So this, this is a little bit larger lot, so in all likelihood, a 10-foot setback would be needed along that north lot line.
Okay.
Just because of the width.
Okay, thank you. So that gives us a sense of that. The other question I had was the, the concept of gateway, and I think Member Anderson went into that more detail than I had thought about it. But I hope that on that corner, we can work with you to get something that is indicative of, we're moving into a new, into a node in a neighborhood, so whether it's a sign or something to signal that as a gateway. I hope that is part of your considerations.
Yes.
And then the other question I have for you is, do you have an example of this type of siding that we could go see? Is there a?
Hardy? Hardy siding?
Yeah, yeah. What you're proposing, so that we get a sense, because for me to imagine the two different materials is difficult without a living example, so.
Yeah, do you want, do you want me to?
Yes, please.
Um, 5412 Halifax.
Okay. Thank you. So I'll go out and look. I'm agnostic about the, the surfaces, but I would like to go out and see that.
Yeah.
And I'll give you some feedback, maybe offline, if I have a strong opinion.
Yeah.
But as, at this point, I'm, I'm agnostic to materials.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Yeah.
That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, yeah, thank you. Member Jackson, Member Pierce?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening.
Hi.
I had just maybe two questions in addition to what we've already heard. One is on the setbacks. And so could we go back to the, the one slide that had the original Edina flats in the top left, and then the row house concept?
Slide 10.
That's slide 10. Okay. And I just, I just want to understand or just clarify, when, Director Teague, when you talk through the setbacks, I think what was reckon, what's being recommended, so go to slide.
Slide 10.
Slide 10.
Slide 10.
It moved off. So, oh, sorry, just go, go.
Slide 10 on mine.
Yeah.
This one?
That one, yeah.
Slide 6.
There we go. Slide 6. You should probably stay up.
Okay.
I, I didn't understand, as you talked through, you started, we know that there are variances that are being requested, but when you talk through it, it sounded like, just the way you said it, that the setbacks for the row house are better than what's in the Edina flats. And so I just wanted to understand what's the variance requirement here and why. That's the first question.
So there are two areas where it is slightly better. So first, along this north lot line, what was approved is a five-foot setback, and what they are proposing is seven feet. And the other is along Oak Lawn. And this is a little bit confusing, because they're showing a setback of 31 feet, but it's measured to the road. This, this building is setback four feet further off of Oak Lawn. So this measurement in the green space here is about 35, 36 feet. So it's pulled away from Oak Lawn about four feet.
Okay.
Along Valley View, it's about the same. It was 10, well, no, it's a little bit further back. 10 feet is what was approved along Valley View. That was the variance. And they're showing a 10-foot setback line right here, and the buildings are a touch further back.
Okay. So it would be, it feels like about the same.
Above the same.
Right. And so then if we do, the purpose of the variance then is just to specify what they actually are in this sketch plan?
I think the other things that we had brought, sorry, the other things that we had brought forward had even encroached more than what was approved with the Edina flats.
Yeah.
So we feel very good about where we got with these row homes with the setbacks.
Got it.
Being even just a tad better than what was approved in Edina flats.
So I think it's, it really is important to ensure that it's clear, what we're talking about in terms of these setbacks. We do have, Member Anderson mentioned some of the feedback that we've received does speak about setbacks. And so just being clear on what it is, neither here nor there, but just being crystal clear, this is what we're asking for. That actually makes it easier for us to, to field feedback and then answer questions as well. So thanks for that.
What is then, can I ask a question?
You sure can.
What is then the approved setbacks? Is it based on Edina flats what's approved?
Oh, there's a city standard for PCD-1.
Correct, yeah. So the, the variances that would be requested would be from the PCD-1 standards. I included in that table the listing of the variances that were approved to kind of, to give you an idea.
Yeah.
So yeah, with a formal application, we'll have the setbacks clearly shown, there'd be a registered survey submitted where we have those exact setbacks.
No, that, that's a really good clarification. So we, we're not actually comparing setbacks from Edina flats to row house. You're doing that just for illustrative purposes.
Correct.
But the variances will go against the standard.
Correct.
Got it? Okay, perfect. Thank you. And then the second question, the finishes?
Yeah.
And so you articulated the finishes in the context of it's more expensive to do one versus the other.
Mm-hmm.
Right? And I totally get that. But I, I do think that from an aesthetics perspective for a home in that space, I actually think the siding fits a single-family home better than the brick. It would, to me, it feels like that might be more industrial if, if the front were brick. And as we understand the zoning, it's actually was intended to be in more of an industrial zone.
Mm-hmm.
And so I would, like, I would think about it more that way.
Yeah.
As well. And then the last thing I would say, and I, and I say this for all of these, and you've done this, I'm sure, but continuing to meet with those neighbors that are, what I typically say, just more immediately kind of impacted, to be able to, to come back and say, yep, we've heard these concerns, and, and here's what we think we're going to do. And in some cases, if you're not able to, for whatever reason, that's fine, too. I think it's, what's important is to keep the dialogue going.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Thank you. I'm thinking of all the iterations I've been through, including the Edina flats, which was part of the overall master project, master plan for Edina flats. But I think I was always worried, I think others were too, that, you know, how are you going to do underground parking for four units on that Burley Hair Salon site?
I wish you would've told me.
And it, it proved to be a legitimate concern, not only for you that owned the property, but us, and you couldn't do it. And then, since then, we've seen several iterations that just didn't work, and the latest of which was a sketch plan, as I recall, for affordable ownership condominiums, and there were 11 of them, as I recall, on here, and it felt like 10 pounds of sugar in a five-pound bag. And so, and with surface parking. So I, I think, you know, just from a general concept standpoint, I think you've come up with a very good idea here on how to ease that density, still have green space, do something that's consistent with what was approved before for ownership model. These would be ownership models, to the point that Member Pierce made about this. I, I feel the same way. I don't think that you need to use brick personally to comply with what was a commercial sort of building requirement there, because it's not going to be a commercial building. But I'm fussy about the materials that you use, too. And I've told you this, that I don't think you hit the mark with material on the Edina flats on the west side.
Right.
That big sheet, that big white sheet of wall.
Yeah.
I think it was really falls short of the mark for the standards that we would set in this town. So I'm glad that you gave, uh, Member Jackson an address, because I intend to drive by there. And it's hard for me to believe that somebody who was going to downsize from 2.2 million to 1.2 million, or 1.5 million, and own a 2,500 square foot townhouse, isn't going to be fussy about what it looks like.
Uh, they would be fussy, yes.
I expect when you come back here, you know your market, you'll, you'll be showing us something that looks good enough to sell to somebody who's going to pay seven figures for a house.
Right.
And I just tell you that that's going to be important to all of us, too. The setbacks, I, you know, Director Teague, can you remember what the grade change is? You know, up Oak Lawn, that goes uphill. That, that closest house, we had approved a five-foot setback there before, and one of the reasons we were comfortable with that, I think, is that because that house is elevated off of the Valley View Burley Hair Salon site. So I don't know how much grade change there is, but maybe you know, Ms. Remick, do you any sense of that, or Director Teague?
Director Milner pulled up the grading map here, and it looks like it's between two to four to six-foot elevation that goes up.
Goes up.
Yep.
Yep. It seems to be what I recall, too. And when I drive by there enough, where I, and I'm looking over there all the time to see what's happening at the site, which is a variety of things. So I'm going to be, when you come back and you need variances, I'm going to be open-minded about that. And that's all I have to tell you. Overall, I like the idea, but I think it fits with the concept of Edina flats, fits with the concept of being a nice way to enter the neighborhood. I'm even satisfied with the side view on Oak Lawn of the, the east elevation on the row houses. There's a lot of windowing on that side, and I think it looks, looks pretty good. So, Member Anderson, I think his idea was really good, too, of wrapping the corner, you know, moving around the corner, and those brick buildings that he had, those were very good-looking buildings, too. But.
Yeah.
You'll have to make those decisions.
I have Jeff Seabarth looking at that.
Yeah, take a look at that. Thought he had a, a good idea, he was in a nub of a real good idea. All right, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you get, you get all you needed there? Any other questions you've got?
Um, not right now.
Okay.
No, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Remick.
Thank you.
Okay, we've got one more item on this portion of the agenda. This is something we've been working on for well over a year. And that is the 70th and France project, we call it, and this is a decision point tonight on the last piece of that puzzle. We've approved it on a preliminary basis, final basis, and then we looked at whether TIF was important, tax increment financing to make the project work. And we're here tonight to decide whether or not we're going to establish a tax increment financing district through Resolution 2022-26 for 70th and France. And we've had some really first-rate work done, both by our Economic Development Manager, Bill Newendorf, and our professional team of Jay Lindgren at Dorsey &amp; Whitney, who's with us this evening, Nick Anhut is with us this evening from Ellers, and then we've got Brent Webb and Ted Carlson here. Brent Webb from Mortenson Development, and Ted Carlson from Orion is here this evening as well to answer questions. So I think we're going to start out with our, our own Bill Newendorf, who's going to make a presentation on this matter, which we've already seen, I think, at the HRA. But go ahead.
Yes, good evening, thank you. Bill Newendorf, Edina's Economic Development Manager. And as you referenced, we're here tonight to give final consideration to Resolution 2022-26. This is pertaining to the 70th and France Tax Increment Financing District. Over the last year and a half, we've put a lot of work into this, into this review, and there's a great deal of information in your packet that summarizes the past steps and past reviews. But tonight I wanted to pull back a little bit and look at the, the bigger picture as you make your final considerations. So as you know, the developer did request that the city consider the use of tax increment financing in a reimbursement model to make this multi-phase project possible. Over the last 14 or 15 months, we've reviewed and analyzed and scrutinized that request. We've confirmed that the site does qualify as a 15-year TIF district. We've confirmed that they do have a budget gap currently at $22 million. We've prepared potential terms of a TIF agreement that, again, follows a reimbursement model, and that was presented to and preliminarily approved by the HRA in February. As required by state statute, we've notified all the relevant taxing agencies. We've held a public hearing on March 1st that then continued for, for almost another two weeks until March 14th. So after all of those steps, I'm still of the opinion that we, that I would recommend this resolution. But I wanted to go back and again, kind of pull back big picture, and over the public hearing process, we did receive several dozen comments and a few questions about the project. I just wanted to highlight some of those key comments and questions. So from a high-level perspective, the, the primary reason we're, we're having this conversation about tax increment financing is to secure this new multi-phase mixed-use development. There's been a lot of discussion in both the media and reflected in a lot of the comments received about housing, but many of those comments overlooked the commercial nature of this proposal. There's a six-story Class A professional office building proposed to be built right on the corner, about 165,000 square feet of new Class A space, office space, and an additional 35,000 square feet of brand-new retail space right on the hard corner, on a nice commercial corner here in Edina. That is one of the four pads that would be delivered on the site. Right now, it's just a little bit under six acres, and it would be subdivided into four individual parcels that could then be connected by new, by a new street grid. So the office is the building on the corner. Of course, there are apartments, there's also parking, and a commercial bank branch. One of the reasons that we're talking about this type of project, this mixed-use, multi-phase is due to its location. This is a very desirable commercial corner. Where these renderings come from are the developer's marketing materials that I haven't shared before. But the site is well-served by transit, by highways, and it's also near to the regional bike trail. So some questions did come up in the public hearing about how this project embraced transit. And frankly, I couldn't think of a better way to embrace transit than building right on a transit line. The number six bus route goes right past the site. Today, it just goes past it. I don't believe there, it even stops there. There's really not a big reason to stop. But, but being located there with new office, new jobs, and new housing is a big change for that corner. The site's also well-served, well-positioned in the marketplace. There's lots of great talent. There's lots of great talent in the area, both in Edina and our surrounding communities, people that can take, that can fill those jobs, fill those positions, have a reasonable commute, and also enjoy all the amenities in the area, the shops, the dining, et cetera. As we've put these plans together, we, of course, did consider the community goals as they've been expressed over the last couple of years in our comprehensive plan, as well as other documents. We've looked at the, at the comp plan, we've looked at the Southdale District Plan, we also looked at the Southeast Redevelopment Project Plan. And each of those documents, using slightly different language, really strive to pursue mixed uses on each site, taking some of these larger parcels and subdividing, subdividing them to be more walkable and more pedestrian-friendly, embracing multimodal transit, so including cars, trucks, bikes, and buses, and also providing employment opportunities. I also wanted to touch on briefly how TIF works, both by Minnesota statute as well as here in Edina. The statute does allow TIF to be used to provide funding, to attract this type of, this type of private investment, and the statute does prescribe a number of different types of expenses that are eligible for reimbursement. Now, Edina typically looks at that list, and we narrow the list quite a bit. Our past practice, which we're still recommending to employ in this project, is number one, only use TIF when necessary. We don't TIF every project just because. We use TIF on a reimbursement basis, so after the developer finishes the project or the phase of a project, that would then enable TIF for that portion. And also, the amount of TIF should be commensurate with the cost of those public benefits, those elements that really deliver benefit to the public. I asked Nick Anhut with Ellers to quantify that, and he's done so in this table, and we're happy to answer questions when I'm finished running through this. But the short story is, today, the site delivers about $200,000 in tax revenue to our local taxing agencies, the city, the county, and the school. Now, a lot of other tax monies go to the state, go to the fiscal disparities pool. When the project is finished, that $200,000 will be increased to about 2.5 million annually to the local taxing jurisdictions, city, county, and school. The total tax bill is estimated to be about 4 million, 4.2 million, but certainly, there's a pretty significant increase in the overall tax base, something that we'd like to see as the community grows. I wanted to also remind everyone of why we're here tonight and the steps in this process. Whenever the city considers TIF, there's two critical actions. We're at step one tonight, and that's creating the TIF district. So we're considering the adoption of a TIF plan that defines the geographic area, the start date, the end date, and gives a high-level budget for monies that would be collected in there. In the future, we'll consider an actual agreement with the developer based on the general terms that we reviewed back in February. So tonight's action is strictly to create the TIF district. We would plan to come back later this year, or possibly early next year, to do the final agreements as far as what the, what the actual agreement might, might look like. And you've seen this before, but I wanted to share it again. This is a multi-phase project, which makes it much more complex than, than a simpler, simpler deal. The first thing to be done is to relocate the bank. We're calling that step zero, because we've structured this so that no TIF monies would flow to the bank. That will be completely self-financed. The next step in the process is building all those roads, the new 71st Street, the Ewing, the Drew, those new internal roadways. As those roadways take shape, the Phase One apartments would grow. And when those apartments are finished, we would consider awarding a TIF note up to 5 million. That actual amount would be adjusted based on the actual expenses incurred by the developer. Right now, we're just at that budget phase, and this construction is, is over a year away, so we still have a lot of fine-tuning to do with the budget. So of course, in our agreement, we did put several safeguards to make sure that if their, if their expenses are lower, that the TIF would be lower. Phase two would then be the commercial phase. Now, depending on marketing and construction materials, availability in the, in the supply chain, that might start at the same time as the apartments, or it might be phased afterward. But the office and, and parking would be built at the same time. When those are finished, a second TIF note would be awarded, up to 17 million. Same comments about that's the maximum, we'll actually look and see what, what it costs, and we might downsize that note. And that would be used to reimburse the developer for the final site prep, for the public plaza, and then the, the biggest pool of public parking. I had mentioned TIF reimbursement. This chart you've seen before, it shows the various options of how various, how different types of cities use TIF. Edina really prefers to use the method of TIF that provides no risk or minimal risk to the city and the city taxpayers. And again, that's what we're recommending here. For this project, the developer bears all financial risk. They're required to secure the debt and equity upfront, to acquire the land upfront, and pay the cost, and contract the work. There's no financial risk to the city. The TIF notes would only be issued after each phase is completed, after we've had a chance to re-scrutinize their actual numbers and make sure those TIF notes are properly sized. Again, we might be, well, we, we are able to reduce the size of those notes if the, if the actual construction costs are lower than we're currently estimating. When it comes to paying those notes or reimbursing it, the payments only come from those new taxes generated from the site. So it doesn't come from a neighboring parcel or a property in a different neighborhood. It's only subject to what is generated from that property. And if the site doesn't perform as well as we think it will, that's the developer's risk. The city has no obligation to dig anywhere else to fulfill that obligation on the TIF note. That risk rests with the developer. There are several other safeguards we include. I provided just a quick summary here, but we're also requiring the developer to apply for a variety of different grants to try to reduce his gap, and also the amount of TIF. We added a provision in our, in our terms with the, with the developer about those contingency funds, to make sure that they're used for appropriate purposes and not simply to pad the profit of the project. So we have rights there. When it comes to issuing the TIF note, again, we'll right-size that based on the actual costs. And then after the project is finished, we always have rights to look back to make sure that upon a sale, we've not used TIF to overly enrich the development. If they've, if they hit a grand slam with the, with the sale of the project, we would terminate the TIF or pull back the TIF. That's standard in all the TIF conversations we have here in Edina. This slide you've seen before, but I think it's important to note, there are several things that we're not going to be using tax increment for, and that's the private elements of the building. So the private parking under the office building, the private parking in the podium of the residential tower, the actual construction of that office building or the tenants within, and the same, the construction of the high-rise residential or any of the internal apartments, none of that will be financed with TIF. We're really focused on the site preparation to split the site into four pads, and then the parking, the public parking. So a number of questions and themes were expressed in the public hearing. We did hold it for about two weeks, per our current policy. The, the most frequent comment or concern was about the use of TIF, expressing that Edina should not use TIF to subsidize market rate or luxury housing. I could not agree more. Edina does not use TIF to subsidize luxury housing. We haven't, and we don't intend to this time either. So the, the TIF is structured to help pay for those site prep costs, to build all those new roads, which, while they're open to the public, they will be forever maintained and repaired and plowed and salted by the developer. So that's a cost, it's a benefit we achieve without incurring the cost. Another popular comment came up about affordable housing with concerns that there's no affordable housing built into the project. That is correct, but I do want to point out that, that the developer is following our city policy and providing about $3.3 million into Edina's Affordable Housing Trust Fund that could then be used as this council sees fit. It could fund a new program, it could fund a new project. It has to be related to affordable housing, but that is a contribution that, that is an option in our, in our affordable housing policy, and the developer intends to make good on that. After working with Ellers Associates, we also wanted to provide possibly a future opportunity so in the budget of the TIF plan, there's a line, line item for additional affordable housing. Now, there's no guarantee that it'll be there, but just in case, this is a wildly successful project, and it bears more tax revenue than we expected, we put a placeholder so that up to $6 million might be available for future affordable housing. Now, I don't want to promise that it's going to be there, but as we, one of the reasons we work with Ellers is because they do these types of agreements throughout the state and throughout the nation, and they know how to look out for the best interest of the overall community and provide upside in the future. And that's what we've done for affordable housing here. Another comment that came up in the public hearing in person on March 1st was a concern about the lack of transit on the site. As I mentioned earlier, the new project is located right on the, on the bus route. We did include in the terms of the TIF agreement, or the TIF term sheet, that the, the developer will commit to providing easements for future bus service at no charge to the city or the bus agency. I've met with Metro Transit a number of times in recent months to make them aware of this project, encouraging them to serve it sooner or have it on their radar. Their response has been they'd be happy to serve it in the future after it's finished, so they are, are aware of it. And again, I wanted to remind folks that new, there hasn't been a new Class A office building built in Edina for more than 20 years. And having a new facility here certainly provides a much shorter commute to, to employees in Edina, our surrounding community, especially compared to going to a comparable property in downtown Minneapolis or downtown St. Paul. So we think that also helps bus transit and helps shorter commutes for everyone in the The final key question that came up, both in the public hearing and also some, some of the council members asked, was what's the financial return to the city for this And that's a question, it's difficult to quantify precisely, because everything is estimates at this point, but it did have, Mr. Anhut from Ellers prepare a table that reflects that, and after I'm finished with my presentation, I'll ask him to run through it and answer any questions you have. So again, in conclusion, some of the key benefits of this TIF district, and why we're having these conversations and even considering this tonight, is really to create that new Class A destination. The site currently is zone commercial. It could easily be transformed into another shopping center. In fact, that was one of the first proposals we heard. This is the fourth proposal on the site. But the developer is willing to take a much greater risk and, and pursue a much more ambitious project that I believe really builds on the legacy in the Southdale area as a place for employment and commerce. Decades ago, the city made the decision to have Southdale Mall built there. A few decades after that, we made the decision to build Centennial Lakes in a mixed-use fashion. This project, using mixed uses, really continues that legacy, and it really starts to create that foundation for economic success for future generations in Edina. From a planning perspective, the subdivision of the large six-acre site into four smaller pads is potentially the first project to really follow through on those Southdale guidelines. And it sets the tone for the neighboring parcels. If they change at some point in the future, the street grid has been established that hopefully the neighbors can then connect to, to yield that bigger plan. Of, of course, one of the biggest benefits of this is having options for drivers and for pedestrians to go from one location to the next without clogging up France Avenue. There would now be additional options for them to traverse through the area without being stuck at a red light on France. It also makes the big transition to a public parking model, or a district parking model. This would be the first time this has happened in the Southdale area since the 80s or 90s, when we built Centennial Lakes. There's a shared parking or public parking model there. So for this particular district, right now, we're looking at about 668 public parking stalls that would be available for, for visitors to the site as well as the general public. And at the Planning Commission, we had a lengthy conversation about the future of parking and how much parking we need in 10 years, or 20 years, or 50 years. None of us can predict the future, but we did include a provision in the, in the TIF term sheet that the, that the developer is agreeable to, that if parking is not, is not needed on that site in the future, or if the rights to the parking cannot be delivered in the future, the city would have the option to purchase the parcel for $1 and transform it as is appropriate for those next generations. In your packet, there's also a comparison of various tax bases. I mentioned this is the fourth different proposal we've seen for this site. The impact or tax base is tremendous, and by the numbers, the tax capacity of this would increase by a factor of 10. The market value would increase by a factor of 12. The amount of local property taxes available would also increase by a factor of 12. And then finally, while it's, it's, it's not unusual, the numbers are very high. In order to secure their building permits, the developer would have to make the 3.3 million contribution to the Affordable Housing Fund. They'd have to make a 1.3 million contribution to our park fund, and a 2.4 million contribution to the sewer fund. Those are all monies that would not be realized if this project doesn't move forward, and the city council has the discretion to use those funds in their respective categories, housing, parks, and sewers, to fulfill whatever community needs that you deem appropriate. Once the developer pays the fees, it's in the city's budget, and we could use it to meet other needs. So with, with that in mind, I still stand by the recommendation to approve this resolution. We have our full team here tonight to answer any questions you might have, and with that, turn it back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Newendorf, for that very thorough presentation. Does anybody on the council have questions for Mr. Newendorf at this point in time? Member Jackson?
Yes, I have a question about something that happened at the Planning Commission, and that was citing the Climate Action Plan as a land use document, sort of superseding the comprehensive plan. And I believe we asked, I don't know if it was Mr. Lindgren that we asked about that, or if it was Mr. Kendall, but can, can we answer the question as to how the Climate Action Plan is or is not a part of our consideration for this TIF district?
Mr. Mayor, council members, for the record, Jay Lindgren with Dorsey &amp; Whitney Law Firm, Special Counsel of the City for Economic Development Matters. I might have to step back just for a moment and talk about what the role of the Planning Commission is in the establishment of a tax increment district. Just like when you're doing a land use approval and you get the recommendation of the Planning Commission, but then ultimately, you as the elected policymakers make a final decision and determine what to do with that thoughtful recommendation that comes from the Planning Commission. The tax increment statutes have a separate requirement, it's a similar requirement. And so what that says is that in just considering what you're considering tonight, one of the findings that you have to make is that the project that's proposed is consistent with the general plans for development of the city as a whole. And the statute also says that in order to help you form that conclusion, that you should ask the Planning Commission if they're interested in offering you a written opinion about what that is. So I think, first of all, it's a broad question, okay? So I think the Planning Commission can look at what they want to look at. However, we do have a statutory definition of what you're ultimately supposed to look at, and I don't want to read too much, Mr. Mayor, but I would say that, and this is in the memo, that's a part of the public record and that you have in your packet, but your standard is to find that there's consistency with the general plan, and that you took the time and made the effort to ask the Planning Commission if they wanted to give you an opinion. And by definition, for the relevant statute, the general plan for development of the, of the city as a whole means a plan adopted by the city establishing general objectives for the future use of the land in the locality. I view that as the comprehensive plan that's required under Chapter 473. It's certainly appropriate to look at whatever else is out there, but at the It's certainly appropriate to look at whatever else is out there, but at the end of the day, what you're finding is, is that you have found, or not found, that the project is consistent with the city's Comprehensive Plan.
Thank you very much.
Does that help?
It does. Thank you, Mr. Lindgren.
Does that answer your question?
It does, yes.
In terms of Climate Action Plan?
Mm-hmm.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you, Mr. Lindgren. Member Jackson, why don't you go ahead as long as you've started the ball rolling here with the question?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I think Mr. Newendorf alluded to this, but this is the first project that is applying the Southdale District Plan with its overall objectives of breaking up these superblocks into neighborhood blocks and make it a walkable, pedestrian-friendly area, which is a really big change. So it's really more than the sum of its parts. We've gone into detail about what's going into the different elements of this and the land use and then the TIF agreement, but I wanted to go way back to a 50-foot, 5,000-foot view and look at this. And I'd also want to just add that we've had really intense discussions, and Mr. Newendorf has been working very hard on this, and this will not happen without TIF. And so that's why we're here tonight. But looking at the big picture transformation, you know, I talked to several longtime Edina leaders and community leaders and members of the Southdale Group, and Chair Wolf is here this evening, and thank you for coming, and consulted with them about how does this fit into the history of Edina? And one of the people I talked to reminded me that in 1958, before the creation of Southdale Mall, Edina's number-one industrial classification was mining. We were a small mining town on the edge of Minneapolis. Since then, we've grown. We've grown a lot. We're a bustling city with an estimated market value of $13.78 billion. And what makes that happen? Innovation. This is a very innovative community. So in 1958, the Dayton Brothers came, looked at a field, and said, "We're going to create the first enclosed shopping mall in the world." And they did, and it transformed the community. In 1988, Ken Rosland went down and looked at the gravel pit and said, "We can transform this." And they created this regional park with mixed-use apartments, condominiums, and offices. It's a regional draw. It's a model for the country of what can be done in an urban space. In 2018, I was sitting in the audience as a member of the Energy and Environment Commission for another matter, and Michael Schroeder stood up and he presented the Southdale District guideline, or plan. And as he was talking, I was just thrilled that this plan is as transformative as the creation of Southdale Mall or the creation of Centennial Lakes. And I think that it's not transformative just for our own community, but also how suburbs across the country can evolve from a space that's a bedroom community based on car travel to an urban space that maintains that space and light and greenery and accessibility that we value in the suburbs. So sort of the best of both worlds. And I was absolutely thrilled about that. So like I said, I met with Michael Schroeder and Colleen Wolf, and we talked a lot about what the process they went through. And I'm going to read quite a bit from the documents because I think it's really important to memorialize this moment, that we're looking at developing this plan into a reality. And it's also important to realize that this group that put together the Southdale Plan, they were members of our community. They weren't high-thinking theorists. They were businesspeople and residents here in the community, talking about what our values are and how we want to see this development happen. What preceded this is, we're starting to look at redevelopment in the Southdale area, and it was chaotic. And the Planning Commission, really driven by Michael Fisher, Kevin Staunton, and Michael Schroeder, were looking at this going, "How are we going to do this?" And they said, "We need to put a plan together. We need to do this in a planned manner." So I want to read a few quotes from these conversations that I had with community leaders and members of the Southdale Group. So as the Southdale Area Plan redevelops, how do we do this? We want to do it on a real-world basis. Will a development drive redevelopment of the adjacent properties? First, we look at streets as public places and set that structure, and then we put the buildings in. If not this, we'll fall back to the existing zoning plans, small, low buildings surrounded by surface parking. This can be a catalyst for change in the area. The other owners adjacent to this property in other areas are waiting to see how this project will work. There's risk to being first. With the office building, people, especially young workers, are going to want to be going back to the office. They're tired of isolation, and this office design is going to be very exciting for young workers in particular, but high-end workers in general. Edina is an innovative city. It is successful because it uses plans that are well thought out. The Southdale Plans, the Southdale District Plan and the Experience Guidelines are guidance. They are aspirational. They are not proscriptive. Right now, the Southdale area is a cement park. Neighboring cities offer TIF. Bloomington, Richfield, they kind of set the standard for what developers are expected. Edina does this differently. Innovation is who we are. Edina has always been a forward-looking community. Innovation keeps a community alive and fresh. And then, what is the new normal going to be like? And the Southdale Plan calls for both flexibility and good judgment. And so I think it's really important that we spend a lot of time thinking about where we are and where we're going. It isn't just this development. This is the first step in redeveloping and reimagining the suburban experience and especially the Southdale area. So I want to address the arguments before on TIF, but first I want to go through, since this is the first time that we're applying the Southdale things, so get comfortable. I've got a lot. The first time we've looked at the Southdale District Vision, and I want to go into some details. The Southdale chapter in the Comprehensive Plan is 170 pages, and it has a 37-page guidebook that goes with it, the Experience Guidelines, to help developers. And I'd have to read all those pages and answer every single one of them, but it's a substantial document. And in there, there are elements of the Southdale Plan, and I want to read the experience that the Southdale Group went through to put this together. This is directly from the Plan. Vision and aspirations. Over three years, 2016, 17, 18, the Work Group created an in-depth vision of the future of the Greater Southdale District. In their deliberations, the Work Group identified the district's tremendous assets and explored how they could be repositioned to be building blocks going forward. Discussed the legacy and impact of the incremental decisions of the private sector in responding to market demand for commercial and residential development and of the public sector in providing complementary infrastructure at times in public-private partnerships. Acknowledged the heightened pace of development interest and activity and recognized that the changing socioeconomic profile of Edina and the Twin Cities metropolitan area created new and different market demands for a more experienced base, compact living and work environment, one that was rich in amenities and services. They realized that if the Greater Southdale District evolved towards more intensive and active uses connected by a high-quality, walkable public realm, these changes could make living in the neighborhoods to the west of France and east of York Avenue even more attractive. Through these activities, mutual learning by all parties led to the realization that the public realm, that is the spaces between the buildings, the streets and sidewalks, the parks and the public infrastructure, is the framework around which everything grows. Better public spaces encourage and support better community experiences. Out of these explorations came Design Experience Guidelines, which organize and explain the facets of district-wide structure and development-specific urban design considerations. The Design Experience Guidelines are intended to focus the dialogue between city staff appointed and city officials, along with the private sector, on the importance of the public realm as a form giver for infrastructure investments and development proposals. So that's the vision that they had. In that, they lay out 11 different aspirations, and I'm going to give you just the titles of them. Aspiration 1: Imagine Greater Southdale District evolution organized around human activity with vibrant pedestrian-focused streets, beautiful parks and public spaces, and endearing and enduring buildings. Aspiration 2: Make the Greater Southdale District the model of healthy urban living. Aspiration 3: Invent sustainable infrastructure matching the district's sense of innovation. Aspiration 4: Create neighborhoods of activity within the broader mixed-use patterns of the district. Aspiration 5: Offer a spectrum of living opportunities integrated through the district. Aspiration 6: Expand significantly the number and extent of parks and public spaces. Aspiration 7: Encourage district evolution based on incremental change and the creation of great pedestrian experience. Aspiration 8: Build or plan for a street network encouraging pedestrian movement across and through the district. Aspiration 9: Imagine future transportation. Aspiration 10: Expect the delivery of high-quality, well-designed buildings and sites. And aspiration 11: Frame development guidance for evolution. So these are the big lofty goals that exist in here. That's then summarized down, and this I won't read, but these are the 10 guidelines. So this is for the developers to then go through and interpret that and sort of go through. Do we do the... And the first one, I will read because it's the most important. Every new development begins with a 200-by-200 block or some variation based on context. I can't emphasize this enough. It is this small, walkable block that is going to transform the district. If we do not have this, then the plans won't be realized. And that's the whole idea, is to make this a lovely, walkable, safe, green space. And that's what's happening here. Mr. Newendorf, could you pull up that map for me, please, that you had or Ms. Bennerott? So this was in a presentation that we got, I believe, at the Housing and Redevelopment Authority. And this is very important. So this is a site we're talking about. It's turned on its side, so the up is west and to the right is north. So you see there are nine squares here. One of them is not outlined in red, but it's gray. So this is a nine-square superblock. And the whole idea in the Southdale Guide is to break up these superblocks into this walkable, pedestrian-friendly area. In the southwest, or the bottom left-hand corner, that's where the Bauer is right now. It's already been built as a small block. Then what this development is looking at, the four blocks that are in the upper right-hand corner. So it's taking that US Bank site and breaking it into four small sites. To the south is the National Camera Development, and to the east is where the Pancake House and Warner Stallion are currently. This is really important to look at for the purposes of district parking. This is a real sore spot in the discussion of this, like both the public and the Planning Commission are not happy to have a parking garage. But I want you to look at this in terms of walkability. When I was talking with Chair Wolf and Schroeder, they looked at this and said, "Wait a minute. This is a parking garage right in the middle of this superblock, and it's going to have district parking." So that means it's probably going to be, once this is all fully redeveloped, all these parcels, the busiest spot in the entire superblock. People are going to park there, and they're going to be walking. They're going to be walking to the office. They're going to be walking to visit a friend in an apartment. They're going to be walking to these different developments. And it's going to be the central thing so that as these other sites redevelop, the spillover parking can go into this parking garage. And that makes it a lot more easier. If you look at the picture on the left, you can see the green space down below. That's the promenade. And so if you want to come visit the promenade in the future, you can park at this spot and walk down there. So if there's a big art fair on the promenade, you can park at Centennial Lakes at one end, but up here at the other end, this will be a district area where you can walk, and it will encourage the use of this space beyond this particular development. So this is the square, what we're talking about with the 200-foot blocks, and why this is so central to what we're doing here tonight. Okay? You can take that down. Thank you. So one of the questions that came up is, what's the effect on the neighboring properties? So as I mentioned, to the south and to the east are two different properties that are held by other people, and those owners are waiting to see what happens at this site. Will these 200 blocks work? Will we be able to access this parking? And with that parking right in the middle, it breaks up that superblock and allows you to park once and then walk around to other places. And this gets to some of the aspirations, and I want to read these a little bit more closely. So looking at aspiration number seven. So with these aspirations, they have subtexts. So this is, "Encourage district evolution based on incremental change and the creation of great pedestrian experience, where a basic framework of streets and blocks encourages pedestrian activity in well-considered buildings. A rich variety of public or publicly accessible spaces are woven into the experience of the district. Sites and buildings support a pedestrian experience first, with the storage of cars considered last. Development on each site links to adjacent streets and to neighboring sites to create continuous, safe, and inviting pedestrian experiences." If we don't build this here, it's not going to happen in the neighboring properties. They don't have that central big block to split up, but they can build off of what we're doing here. Number eight. Build or plan for a street network encouraging pedestrian movement across and through the district, where walkable block lengths are the baseline for framework or development. Enhanced or more frequent street crossings facilitate pedestrian movement. Wide landscape boulevards, community corridors within and extending well beyond the district enhance bicycle and pedestrian access while accommodating vehicle traffic on pedestrian terms." And that's what these internal streets are designed to do. Aspiration number 10. Expect the delivery of high-quality, well-designed buildings and sites where spaces on sites are considered for people first, including connections between sites, then the way structures are placed, and then places to store cars are found. Human... So that really has the parking separate from how the people are going to be using this spot. And we'll get to more about the parking garage, but think about it in those terms. It's the last thing you think about where the cars are going to go. Visible human activity is prominent and integrated at every site. People are brought to the streets via major building entries oriented to major streets. Stormwater remains visible as an amenity. So those are some of the aspirations to think about in looking at this street design. Now, this project is not 100% in alignment with the Southdale Guidelines. I don't think anybody ever expected any project to be 100% in alignment. These are aspirations. They're ambitious goals, and they are the start of a conversation. And this is really important. What they say in the guidelines here is, "These guidelines or this plan was never intended to be used as thresholds for acceptability, but rather to shape the dialogue about how a proposal for change might fit the district." And the dialogue is the important thing. We've got our values, and we've got our goals, and then we start the dialogue. So with this, we're getting not only the street grade, but we're getting improved drainage. We're getting usable green space. Think about what's there now. If you're Walk Along France, the sidewalks here, and then you have this dip down into the drive-thru, it's completely unusable space. In the back corner, you've got some trees, which are nice, but nobody ever uses that space. It's unused space, and it's not, doesn't create that vibrancy and activity that people are enjoying it. It's there, and it's unused. One of the elements of the Southdale Guideline is this idea of mixed use. And we've got an office building coming in here, and I want to, again, emphasize, we won't have the office building if we don't have the parking. That's simply the market that we live in in 2022. We can't have one without the other. We don't have that capacity. But this office space is going to bring to this place a vibrancy that other uses will not have. So if you think about the timing of when people are going to be coming and going from this space, if you live in an apartment, you're going to get up in the morning, you're going to go do your business during the day, you come back in the evening, be there in the evenings and weekends. If you're in an office space, you come in in the morning when the apartments have left. You use the space during the day, and you go home, and it's empty during the evenings and weekends. So you've got this back and forth of vibrancy, of people coming and going and using the space at different times in the day. And an office space is different from a medical office where you've got a lot of people coming and going. When you're in your office, you're going to... When you're in your office, you're going to go get some lunch, right, during, at lunchtime, and you'll be supporting those local restaurants. You might spend your lunch hour to go over and do a little shopping. Maybe you need a new coffee table, maybe you need some new clothes. You might take an hour to go do some shopping, and you're supporting those retails and restaurants during the daytime, when other people aren't there. As I mentioned earlier, this is going to be world-class, Class A office space, and that will attract the highest quality of young workers, who really want that good experience during the day, and they want to work in exciting places. And as Mr. Newendorf mentioned, this will be a shorter drive for people who live in Edina, to have the opportunity to work in Class A office space and not have to go to Bloomington, or to Minneapolis, or to St. Paul, or other farther-away places. So this is an opportunity for Edina workers as well. There's going to be, on Ewing Street, there's a plaza, and there's this pop-up, well, short-term retail space. So there's going to be programming in the plaza and along Ewing, so we'll have that pedestrian experience like we do at 50th and France in the plaza there. We've got these short-term lease, small spaces that can be rented by entrepreneurs. And I've really thought a lot about this. Now, we've got traditional retail in the area, but this is something that's new and innovative. If you think about some of the most successful businesses, Trader Joe's. Trader Joe's is exciting, not because it has good food, but it does. But there are a lot of places that do. But it also has a sense of the hunt. You never know whether you're going to find something at Trader Joe's. It might be there one time, it might not be there the next time. So there's always a sense of excitement. What's going to be there? What's going to be new? What do I have to buy now that won't be there later? And it's the same thing with TJ Maxx. You go in, you're never sure what you're going to buy. It's a very effective retail model. We see that with that Hopkins ice cream store. You have to get in a lottery to buy the ice cream, so everybody's dying to buy it. That sense of scarcity really drives activity and excitement for an area. And by having these short-term leases, you never know what you're going to find in terms of retail experience when you come here. And there'll be that sense of the hunt. So that's what this development is, and some of the excitement that it's going to bring to this area. In addition, you know, I want to talk about why TIF, and why TIF matters. So we've got this development. It's got some really exciting things to it, and most importantly, it has that 200-foot block layout. The public made several arguments against, I think Mr. Newendorf covered them. I'll go through this fairly quickly. First of all, I want to acknowledge that people in Edina do not like TIF. And I hear that loud and clear. And that was actually my first reaction when TIF was asked for this project. I'm like, "No." And Mr. Newendorf went in, and he did not offer TIF. This is not something we offer to developers. They have to ask us for it. And we negotiated, and we negotiated hard to try not have any. But it turns out that it's necessary to get this done. And we got an opinion from Allers that shows, or from Ellers, that shows it really does, it is necessary to make this happen. So people said, "Well, no TIF for market-rate apartments," and that's true. None of the TIF money is going for market-rate apartments, and that's not something that we would offer. The city would pay for the interior streets and sidewalks anyway. That is not true. These interior streets and sidewalks and the boulevard and the walking experience would not be built. They're not on the plans. They're not on the short-term plans, they're not on the long-term plans. This isn't something the city of Edina is going to build. This is something that comes with this development. So if we want these interior walkable streets, we want these broad sidewalks that go along France and 70th, they come with this development. They're not on the plans to be built by the city of Edina. This will lose money for the schools, that's not true. The current taxes that are being paid by this property will continue to be paid during the TIF period. And as we said, right now, it's about $200,000 a year for all three entities, the county, the city, and the schools. When this is done, that's going to be approximately $2.5 million a year in revenue. That's 12 times what we're getting in revenue now from this site. I've heard from people who said, "Well, they're going to build the office anyway, whether we do this or not." And that's simply not true. And we've really negotiated this hard. And this Class A office building will not be built without the parking, and the parking will not be built without TIF. And that's the bottom line of the negotiations. Again, people said we don't need the district parking. This district parking will be fundamental to not only this site, but also to the neighboring sites, and making this an opportunity where you park the car and enjoy the pedestrian experience. So those are the complaints that we heard from the community. And then we've got what happened at the planning commission. And, you know, we consulted with the planning commission, and they looked at it and said they didn't think it complied with the comprehensive plan or with the climate action plan. I want to remind people, the comprehensive plan in the city of Edina, the 2018 plan, is a document that comes in at over 4,600 pages. The relevant chapters, there are eight relevant chapters for this proposal. They include land use, the Greater Southdale District Plan, housing, transportation, environment, economic competitiveness, human rights, and arts and culture. In the review, the planning commission found that this project did not comply with a comprehensive plan, citing these reasons. I'll pull up their thing. One: Imagine transportation in the Southdale District, where transportation recognizes trends, including autonomous vehicles and a time when parking structures aren't needed for public parking. Two: Personal ownership of vehicles will be reduced dramatically, and fleets of driverless vehicles will reduce the demand for parking. Three: The proposed development plans do not follow recommendations contained in the Southdale Area Design Experience Guidelines regarding the design of parking structures. And four: The proposed redevelopment plan, inclusion of onsite structured parking, do not move towards strategies identified in the Climate Action Plan, which is scheduled to become effective April 1st, 2022, including doubling mass transit ridership in Edina by 2030 and decreasing community-wide vehicle miles traveled by 7% by 2030. So that's what the planning commission found. And I have to say, one of my frustrations with this whole project is that I've been expecting a higher level of analysis from the planning commission. And as I've thought about this over and over, I really think that what's happening is we have a consultant who comes in and tells us these things, does an analysis. And the planning commission relies on the consultant's analysis and then states their opinion about how they feel about the project. And we are losing that voice of the community having this dialogue. This is a community-created plan, and we need a community dialogue to interpret it. And relying so heavily on this consultant has really circumvented that process. It's robbed us of the community voices they're sharing, and I think it's robbed the planning commission of building that skill set of being able to do this analysis. And if we're going to move forward in the future with this plan, we really need to build that institutional knowledge of how we, as a community, interpret it and not rely as heavily on a consultant to do that. And I want to read aspiration 11, which really goes to that. Frame development guidance for evolution, where development review includes the desired experience, not solely quantitative thresholds. Accommodation of adjacent near parcels. Early reviews focus on ideas, patterns, and relationships, not specific and engineered plans, with that part of the review process based in dialogue, not presentation and reaction. We want a community dialogue here. Demonstrations of quality and especially quality from a long-term perspective are baseline considerations. Collaboration leads to a superior result, with the community's expectations clearly framed as part of the deliberation. Flexibility is not a right, but rather the natural byproduct of a fair exchange for benefits, collaboration, and quality in development. This communication is really important, and I feel like that we've not gotten what we needed from the planning commission with that level. So going back to their decision on March 8th, you know, looking at the comprehensive plan, I did pull out the part of the transportation, because they really don't like the parking. And that's the basis of these decisions. They don't like that parking garage. They don't think it's future-looking enough. So I pulled out the first page of the transportation chapter. It has Edina's transportation planning mission. "The mission for transportation planning in Edina is to provide access and facilitate the movement of people and goods efficiently, safely, cost-effectively, and comfortably to any desired destination, while at the same time seeking to improve community livability and the environment and minimize associated negative impacts." And then I want to read aspiration number nine, which does talk about transportation and is cited here. "Imagine transportation in a district where cars are not the focus and streets accommodate more than vehicles. Major streets balance access and mobility. Some streets serve as community corridors, linking to other community destinations with features that allow for movement in addition to cars. Transit is a baseline service both within the district and to non-Edina locations. Transportation recognizes trends, including autonomous vehicles and a time when parking structures aren't needed for public parking." So, you know, the important thing to hear is that the first word in this aspiration is "imagine." It is not "deliver the future," it is "imagine the future." And I think it's really interesting, and I'm looking at Mr. Lindgren, because we gave him something he's never seen before. And he's been doing this, he's done many of these TIF deals. And we came up with something in this that he's never seen before. And that is, we imagined a future where this parking garage will not be needed. And if that day comes, the city of Edina can buy the parcel of land for a dollar. And I think that's imagining a future where cars are not needed. This parking garage is designed, and I think this is really cool, that it can be repurposed in another location. It can be taken apart and rebuilt in another location. It doesn't necessarily have to be torn down. We don't have to waste that concrete. It can be repurposed, and it's designed that way. So we have imagined a future where cars are not needed. We just can't deliver it in 2022. The second one, I had difficulty understanding how that was relevant. That, let's see. "Personal ownership of vehicles will be reduced dramatically, and fleets of driverless vehicles will reduce the demand for parking." I think that these interior streets would be able to accommodate either self-driving cars or shared ownership cars. They would work the same for those. And again, if we don't need the parking, we can repurpose this land. So I don't understand why that was a reason to say no to this deal. The point is, we've got 11 aspirations with 52 sub-points, and they're meant to frame a conversation. They're not meant to be prescriptive. And I think, especially with "imagine the future," it's been accomplished here. And so I reject those two points. The next one is actually kind of interesting. "The proposed development plans do not follow recommendations contained in the Southdale Area Design Experience Guidelines regarding the design of parking structures." And that's true on one level, that the guidelines anticipate either burying the parking or embedding it in the building. But that, to me, conflicts with the idea of imagining a future without cars. Because once you've buried it underground or embedded in a building, it's permanently there. And so, you know, I don't understand how that is a future without cars, unless you're thinking of having these big structures somehow converted. And there was a discussion about converting the parking garage in the future. And honestly, I don't know what kind of a use you would have for a concrete structure to be converted. I can't imagine it would be a high-quality type of building that's envisioned for what kind of office you would have. One thing that is interesting, though, in the parking garage on the ground floor, it has the capacity for more of the short-term retail. And I think that's really cool, too. So if it takes off on the Ewing side, it can stretch over to the Drew Street side and all the way around this garage, so we can have something really exciting there that can grow. And then finally, the Climate Action Plan. And first of all, the Climate Action Plan was not written when the land use decision on this property was made. So it's kind of an ex post facto law. And in fact, the Climate Action Plan isn't even effective yet. It becomes effective April 1st, 2022. So while it may be informative, it's not controlling. And I really have a problem with applying something ex post facto like that. But, you know, I take these things seriously. I listened to the planning commission, and I went back, and I read all of these documents. I read the 170-page area plan, I read the 37-page guidelines, and I read the Climate Action Plan. And I went through it really, really closely. And I started thinking, first of all, about, well, transit. And this double mass transit ridership by Edina. We've got a green line. The Southwest Light Rail Transit is coming to our neighboring communities. We walk by that all the time in my neighborhood, I walk around. And there's a stop at Optum on Shady Oak Road. And I thought, "Gosh, you know, they're getting their very own transit stop. What's their parking situation like?" So with the help of Mr. Teague, I got the planning documents for those new offices at Optum. And they have parking ratio of 4.4 stalls per thousand. This office building is parked at 3.9 office stalls per thousand. So there are fewer parking spaces for this office building. Optum has its very own light rail stop. It's designed just for those buildings. And it had it when they passed the zoning for that site. When they built the Optum buildings, they knew that that was part of the plan for the light rail. We don't have that planned here. And yet, they have more parking than this site does. So how are we supposed to double, you know, use mass transit as an excuse to say no to this project when we're looking at Optum? It's a future-looking company, and they have their own site, and they have more parking than we do. So I'm kind of baffled by that one. The second one was, "Decrease in community-wide vehicle miles traveled by 7% by 2030." And that is a goal of the Climate Action Plan. But what is not in the Climate Action Plan is capping parking as a means to achieve that goal. I looked through the whole thing. There's nothing in there about putting caps on parking. And this is an unvetted, unwritten rule that the planning commission applied. If you don't cap parking, you're not going to reduce the vehicle miles traveled. Well, I don't know how that works. I've never had any public discussion about this. And it really bothers me to have something that's an unwritten rule applied as a reason to deny that this complies with the plans of our city. So at best, what the planning commission did was apply broad extrapolations of currently-written guidelines. And I really am disappointed in their decision. I would not have done that. I would not have used unwritten rules and imaginary standards. This idea of a convertible parking lot that has to be flat is the only kind of parking ramp that's allowed. That's untested. I don't understand why that would be our standard when it's not in any of our planning documents or in any of our public discussions. So their advisory, they advised us, took it into consideration. But our decision is legally binding, and I think that I want to rely on a little bit stronger reasoning. So we'll get to why, then, this project qualifies for tax increment financing. So first, as the Housing and Redevelopment Authority, we found that this project meets the definition for renewal and renovation as a renewal and renovation district. And I'm going to read the findings that we had. This comes from Braun Intertech, and we adopted this as our findings. So I'm reading Braun Intertech's words. "Based on our observations and interviews, we found the subject property, the 70th and France, in need of numerous substantial repairs and remodeling, including structural, light, and ventilation, plumbing, electrical, access, and fire protection issues. In our professional opinion, the property meets the requirements for renewal and renovation of Minnesota Statute 469.179, 174, subdivision 10A. Deficiencies at 7001 France South included roof and insulation per energy code, exterior repairs, boiler replacement and related controls, elevator replacement, ADA restrooms, sprinkler and piping, and fire stopping, asbestos remediation during repairs, and noncompliant stairs and entry walks. Deficiencies at 7025 France Avenue South included roof and insulation per energy code, exterior repairs, boiler replacement and related controls, elevator controls, ADA restrooms, sprinkler piping, and fire stopping, asbestos remediation during repairs, and noncompliant entry walks." So those are the reasons why the current property qualifies as a redevelopment district. Does it meet the BUT400? Does it meet the BUTT four test? Will this project occur without TIF financing? Our negotiations showed that this project qualifies for about $50 million in TIF projects. But we cap, in Edina, we cap the amount of TIF we're going to give. And we won't give more than 10% of the project, of the value of the project. And $22 million is less than 10% of the $250 million of this project. LR scrutinized, our financial firm scrutinized the financial pro forma and determined that the financial gap in the $250 million-plus project is approximately $22 million. LR has also confirmed that but for the use of TIF, this project will be unable to secure private financing. On February 10th, 2022, the HRA agreed with the general business terms identified for the use of TIF. We cite specific, in Edina, we also have this public benefit test that, that's added on to the statutory requirement. And we want some things that are tangible that we give TIF for. And this is what we found. New internal sidewalks and streets with perpetual public easements. Again, that 200-foot block design. Landscape and hardscaping along 70th Street and France Avenue with perpetual public use easements. New public plaza with new public art. New stormwater improvements to benefit the site and general area. New public parking for shared use and sustainable design of the new buildings, including EV charging stations, energy efficiency, and onsite solar energy collection. This will be the first project to employ our new sustainable building policy. And I think that's a really exciting thing. We want to see if this will work. And, and so they're, again, they're the first. When we decided the land use decision, we decided that this complies with comprehensive plan. And none of the arguments against that have changed my mind on this. In addition to all these other things, there are some larger intangible and beneficial elements to this program, to this project. And this is why it isn't just TIF for these specific things. It's TIF for this overall project. And it has, because we want to see, is it, what's this going to show to the rest of the community? Mr. Nundorf touched on this, but $3.374 million will go to our Affordable Housing Fund. And we've got some people from Edina neighbors for affordable housing here. And this will help us and our Affordable Housing Director continue our creative process of providing all different kinds of affordable housing in Edina. So unlike these funds, unlike most funds for, public funds for affordable housing, most funds are, only support multifamily rentals. These funds can support other city initiatives, such as affordable single-family homeowner-- homeownership and naturally occurring affordable housing preservation. Projects supported by the buy-in funds that we've currently used include Homes Within Reach Housing Preservation Program, the Home Ownership Rehabilitation Program, and the Naturally Occurring Affordable Housing 4D Preservation Program. Affordable housing needs a lot of arrows in the quiver to address the needs of our community. And this is one of those very important, very flexible tools that we can have. Another element that is in the TIF deal and is part of this project is that it, the contractor supporting is committed to supporting and hiring minority and women-owned subcontractors. In the agreement, it says, "The developer will commit to the following workforce goals: to maximize participation opportunities for the local workforce, including women and minorities. Minority-owned firms, 32%; female-owned firms, 10%; and 25% of the total subcontracted work will be awarded to businesses that qualify as minority and women-owned business enterprises." Mortenson's a firm that has a track record of delivering on its promises to hire women and minority-owned businesses. And on their website, they brag that they optimize opportunities for MWBE trade partners that focus on capacity building and laying a strong foundation for growth and success. And our lead from Mortenson, Mr. Webb, is part of a program that is helping to bring people of color into the development community and into the real estate development business. And this is, all fits in with our goals as a city to make, to bring equity and growth and opportunity to all people in our community. And so this is a really important, not part of the TIF deal, but really important part of our, what we're getting in this deal. Again, we're increasing the revenue to cities, schools, and county, the tune of $2.27 million a year. That's a lot of revenue. We're creating Class A office space, again, for new work requirements. They're going to have 11-foot ceilings so the natural light can come in, penetrate deep into the, the floor, and it's going to have LED lighting. The only air conditioning that's going to be needed is for the human bodies that are in there. They're going to have, and natural light is so important for a quality experience. It's going to have that air circulation that's needed in a post-COVID world. It's going to give Edina residents a chance to work in a world-class setting with a short trip from home. And it's going to create that full-day vibrancy, the mixed use that's looked at in the Southdale District Plan. We've got the innovative retail space with the short-term leases to encourage entrepreneurs. And finally, and most importantly, this project captures the vision of the Greater Southdale District Plan for the very first time. It is a community-creative, innovative future, and it begins with this project. This project demonstrates the setbacks, interior street rooms, and layout design necessary for the pedestrian experience. District parking lowers the amount of parking that will be needed in the adjacent developments when they happen. This project adds density and mixed use that can attract transit, entertainment venues, and public attractions in the future. This project helps plant the seed for redevelopment of neighboring properties. And finally, it's an innovation that can show how suburbs can transform from a car-centric bedroom community into a vibrant, walkable city. And that's why I support TIF for this project. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Member Jackson. Member Pierce.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I have a question for everyone here. Who's familiar with 4H? Any 4Hers in the House? There's a few, so the head, the heart, you know? All right. So I am, I'm on a tag team with Member Jackson. I'm going to do the hard version of this particular project. And so I want to start, I think it's important to acknowledge feedback that we've gotten from everyone on this. And there was feedback that we received on a Star Trip article suggesting that the murder of George Floyd and the political unrest is a factor in assessing this particular opportunity. And I just want to acknowledge that, but I want to say that that's not the case. I know Mortenson, and they are not avoiding Minneapolis. They are investing in parts of Minneapolis to try and revitalize the community that was ravaged. I've worked with them, nonprofit organizations. They're working with other developers, trying to revitalize Minneapolis. And so I've worked directly with Brent to try to figure out what we could do in other aspects outside of kind of our, our day jobs, if you will. And so that was an unfortunate comment, but I think it, it was applied out of context. But it's important to me to do two things. One, acknowledge the feedback that we got regarding it. But I did want to start by just underscoring what I know of Mortenson and the individuals that I have worked directly with, that that's not, that's not the case. So with that, I also want to talk about that we have received many, many comments regarding the project. There are a few that highlighted density as a concern, the use of TIF, which we just heard about, the lack of affordable housing. And again, it's important to acknowledge those concerns that were expressed because they, they are important. But we also had emails that were in support. And so over the past three to four weeks, I can say that I was, after following through the process, I was at a point where I was not in support of the project. And so what I needed to do is spend some time really digging in and understanding more. And so that's what I've done over the last three to four weeks. And I've spoken to people that were in favor, and some that expressed that they weren't in favor. But it's individuals in the community, both commercial and residents, that engage in the process in what I consider to be a respectful manner. And so I always envalue, I always value that kind of input. And so with that, after digging into the project and trying to understand the community concerns as well as the public value, my conclusion is that I think we should make this investment. And I will acknowledge this will be an unpopular next few months for us as we, we move forward. But I do think it's the right thing to do. But between now and then, I think we have to find a better way to articulate value more broadly. It is, it's very complicated to articulate value when we talk about a project of this, this stature. But here are a few points that I would underscore. We have a developer who is willing to invest a quarter-billion dollars in Edina. That's a big investment, a quarter-billion dollars in Edina. As Member Jackson talked about, the development will be the start of the implementation of the Southdale District Guidelines. And I think it will infuse that area with the framework that will be the impetus for millions of more investment from other developers. Parts of the development do meet the criteria for TIF. And so we've heard that we shouldn't use TIF, doesn't meet the criteria. Well, parts of the development actually do meet the criteria for TIF. So for the city to leverage $22 million in TIF funding for a quarter-billion-dollar investment, which will continue to pay future dividends, to me, is an extremely sound investment for any city who could afford it. And the developer, the key point here is the developer is taking all the risk. We talked about the fact that the TIF plan is set up as a reimbursement. The tax structure is very complicated. But for this, as we set this up as a reimbursement, once the project is done and all the value is delivered that we've articulated, they get reimbursed for the incremental tax value. And so what that means is that base tax value that's there today, that continues forward until the tax district is closed. And then, as we saw, we go from today's tax base to 9X, 10X, 12X, right? Whatever that future value is projected to be. We heard that there's currently no plan for affordable housing units. Well, that's true. And so I want to talk about Hope Milton. She's somebody that I trust, that she's balanced in what she's seeing. And Hope sent an email that said, you know, she would have been ecstatic if this project still had that affordable housing, workforce housing unit. It's not there. But she didn't say trash the project. She said, there is a $3 million buy-in there. You know, we need affordable housing. I think you should consider that need as you do your deliberation. I felt like that's a balanced approach that I can respect. And so the current plan doesn't include the units that were there originally. However, there is the buy-in. And I can attest that I have met with Brent Webb and Director Hawkinson to try to figure out, how can we come up with a more sustainable way to provide home ownership so that we can take the buy-in funds and ensure that we get value out of it? So that, that's the spirit of the intent behind the buy-in. So it doesn't have affordable housing in there, but there's a different approach that I believe, as we continue to work on it, we'll find a way to provide even more value. There are many other benefits in the development. And when we do these presentations, we kind of, we have, we, we should have limited time, but sometimes we don't. We just go through it so quickly that I think a lot of these things are missed. And so there are other benefits in this development, some of which are job creation. There's modern retail spaces. There's Class A office spaces you've heard about. Innovative public gathering spaces. And as Member Jackson mentioned, this is the first such development that is going to meet all of the sustainability policies. I have probably two and a half to three pages worth of benefits. And I am happy to share those with anybody. Just email me, and I will share with you the list of the benefits that I am looking at. And so I say all of that, but here's the challenge. These benefits are, likely will be realized if you have a five-to-10-year outlook. Some of them may take 10 to 15 years to realize. But I think the key point is, if, if we don't invest over the next one to five years, we won't actually reap any of those benefits. And so with that, I think we should move forward, and I think we have to do the even harder work of articulating to our constituents what the value is, how we see it, and how we think that they should internalize it. And we have to do everything that we need to do in order to enable it. In politics, no one should be asking us to be right. There, there isn't a single decision that we've taken where there is an unequivocal right or wrong answer. And this one's no different. I simply believe that the benefits of this development outweigh what I call the emotional equity that we all put into our community and the fiscal investment required of the city. And so I have moved from the point of not supporting to, I do believe this is the, a good investment for the city of Edina. And those who are listening, you've heard me say, I implore you, I respect respectful dialogue. And so email me. I'm happy to meet at Jerry's. Email you, what have you, to understand your position as well as articulate mine. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Pierce. Member Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also want to thank my colleagues for their very thoughtful comments tonight. They're well-thought-out, sweeping, but well-thought-out. I, I, just to reinforce my position where I've been really with this project for quite a long time. And that is entirely based on the fact that the timing, the changing work patterns, living patterns in our society, which have been exacerbated by the pandemic, play a large role in how I view this project. Because I believe that there's a certain level of risk involved in that. But, but it's an approved project. Tonight's vote is really just about a $22 million TIF district there. And there's a lot of use for TIF. We know that. We've voted on for our TIF projects on various occasions, and it appears that we'll probably go in that direction tonight. My, my sense of caution in throwing $22 million at a private project is really based on the fact that currently, the vacancy rate for four-to-five-star apartment units in Edina is 16.1%. And we have an additional 886 planned units, including this building. And we have an additional 886 planned units, including this building, the Fred on 77th Street, and the Perkins site. Those 886 units will increase the current inventory by over 43%. That has a dramatic effect on vacancies and increased risks by creating downward pressure on rental rates. That's a concern for me. I readily acknowledge that we, there is no affordable housing, of course, on the site. And the 3 million-plus drop-in into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund be useful. It can be used in many, many ways. And we have a need for that. Whether this project is built or not, it isn't really, the $3 million, 3-plus million dollars is not dependent on a TIF district. We take the position today that the TIF district is necessary to build that project. I could probably go through a lot of numbers to show that that's a questionable statement. I don't necessarily think that's true. However, the most important thing, I think, that we keep in mind as elected officials is that public sentiment on granting public TIF support on this project is very low. The council's received 114 emails regarding granting TIF support on it, 113 were opposed. One voiced no opinion, as Member Pierce has mentioned, but reminded of our affordable housing buy-in policy. 94 residents on Better Together offered public testimony, but 93 opposing the TIF district, only one in support. There were only two who testified during the public hearing on March 1st, both opposed. Out of 210 public responses on this project, only one was in support of it. For financial reasons, density reasons, so on, I have concerns. I won't support public financing on this project. But I think, in the end, there will be a project there. I think it'll be a good one, and I think it will contribute to the town. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Anderson. Some great points made this evening. And as I sit and listen to my colleagues, it makes me realize, over time, how the work we do is really a reflection of what the Greeks intended when they established the concept of democracy, that all voices need to be heard and all voices matter. And it makes our decisions more complete and hopefully more well reasoned. But our job is not to count noses or put our finger in the wind. It's instead to determine what we think is best for the city. And that's why we get elected by the residents of our town to make those decisions. And if they don't like the decisions we make, then there's consequences at the electoral, at the ballot box. This whole conversation for the last year and a half about this project, that's, people know, has excited me, has caused me to hearken back to probably close to eight years ago now, when Kevin Staunton first got on the city council, and we were looking at a project at 7200 France. And it was the first project to come up on France Avenue. And we had a conversation about that sketch plan, as I recall. And when we were doing our mayor and council comments, Kevin wisely said, you know, I think this is just the first of a lot of things to start happening around France Avenue and through the whole Southdale District, from Crotown to 494 and York to France. I think we should be thinking about forming a group of residents from the Cornelia neighborhood and other places, and from the business community, and get that working group working on creating some guidelines or some, what became Design Experience Guidelines, for that district. And for nearly four years, that working group comprised of Edina residents and Edina business leaders contemplated the future evolution of the Southdale District. And as a result of that work, they created not only a vision for the Southdale District through those Design Experience Guidelines, but they actually created guidelines that we've been using throughout the entire community. Those guidelines that were developed by that group of citizens and business leaders from our town were established as the foundational element by which to shape the Southdale District over the next 50 years. And when I looked at those Design Experience Guidelines the other day, I had some of them tabbed. And I looked at one that had, I thought particularly apropos language, and it said, "Places link our past to the future. Within every community, there exists a context of memory and identity. That context is made up of the choices and decisions of the past and is inseparable from the physical identity of place. How buildings and streets look, and what parks and open spaces feel like, these choices are integral to what a place will become. By describing the evolving greater Southdale District through experience criteria shaped by the physical context, a framework emerges for how streets will be structured. The relationship of open spaces to buildings and how together the designed environment will support the desired experience outcome." And you heard my colleagues talk about, that are in support of this project, how that's happened with this particular project, the first one since these design guidelines were created, that captures that vision, that captures that dream of our residents. And the framework for all of this, of course, has been what Member Jackson mentioned, is the 200-by-200-foot, 200-foot-by-200-foot grid, which is the building block to support the vision, you know, breaking down those superblocks. There's an expectation of this street grid. It's democratic, it's uniform, as it was pointed out in the Design Experience Guidelines Plan. It's connective. In short, the smaller the blocks are designed, the more the public experience is enhanced. And when you think about this particular project, where we've gone through these considerations of widths of streets, sunlight in public spaces, view corridors, building scale, transparency at the street level, landscaping, lighting, streets and public round paving, courtyards and pocket parks, the cultural context, this project meets all of those particular elements that were so important to the residents of our town and the business leaders in our town that created these Design Experience Guidelines. And in my opinion, the proposed development accomplishes and is entirely consistent with those Design Experience Guidelines and also with our comprehensive plan. So if one believes this plan, approved by the council in terms of its land use authority, captures the Design Experience Guidelines for the first time, complies with our sustainability plan for the first time, and reflects consistency with the general plan as described by Mr. Lindgren, the question is, does this city need to provide any type of non-risk-bearing assistance to achieve the vision of the Southdale Working Group and allow us to create a transformational project for our community? For me, the answer, after careful analysis, is yes. We should, as a city, use a tool authorized by state law to help achieve our collective vision for the Southdale District. So the question then becomes, how does the city and the public benefit by supporting the 70th and France project with tax increment financing and that request? We went through this exhaustive analysis. As has been mentioned by a couple of my colleagues, we could have had over $50 million in TIF-related expenses allocated to this project. Well, we don't do that. We hardly use TIF. We use it about 1% of the time. And we're using it here on less than 10% of the total project value. And so what are we getting for it? We're getting the dedication of 26% of the land area within the development for public use. This includes 1.2 acres consisting of the internal sidewalks and drive aisles and public park east of the office building. The development plans follow a key element of the Southdale Design Experience Guidelines, which is to divide those large parcels into those smaller blocks that I discussed earlier and other colleagues have discussed, and provides vehicle and pedestrian connections to adjacent properties. The plans provide pedestrian and vehicle connections to the properties to the east and the south. These connections and new roadways yet to come will help relieve congestion on France Avenue in the future. The TIF would also help pay for the construction of these public spaces, roadways, and sidewalks that provide these public connections that would help the city of Edina achieve the development form desired in the Southdale Design Experience Guidelines. The project provides district parking for the area, similar to what we're doing down at Centennial Lakes and have done for years. And you could also arguably say the same thing at 50th and France. The dedication of $3.375 million for future affordable housing projects in the city of Edina. And we've had these kinds of dedications before, and we've used that money very effectively and efficiently. One of those projects is just about completed now with Aon, and they're doing a virtual tour tomorrow noon. In the future, should the parking ramp no longer be needed, as my colleagues have pointed out, for the development of district parking, the city can purchase it for a dollar and then determine the best use for the site. The project will also be a catalyst for future and similar development in the greater Southdale area to follow the Southdale District Design Experience Guidelines, in the sense of it being transformational, and is indeed transformational. It's going to change this area and elevate this area to a whole new level. The TIF reimbursement, really what it does is fill a financing gap. It doesn't provide any money for luxury housing. It helps us as a city accomplish what we want to see in this particular part of our community, and that's our investment. This is our commitment to this, making this happen, to make our town look like we want it to look. Because this project is all about a city achieving its vision of what it wants itself to look like in the future, as determined by its residents, not the council, but our residents and our business leaders. And it is well worth it to make use of this financing tool, TIF, to help us achieve that vision. I'm in full support of this project and the issue and the creation of this TIF district. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2022-26 establishing the 70th and France Tax Increment Financing District?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion by Member Jackson, second by a Member Pierce, to establish through Resolution 2022-26, the 70th and France Tax Increment Financing District. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Are aye opposed?
Nay.
All right, we're on to Commission Correspondence. Anything that's come in?
No.
Why we've been on the dais? Thank you. Manager comments. Manager Neil.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a couple of quick ones. I have a report from attending the National League of Cities Congressional Cities Conference. It will be in the next packet. It'll be in the April 5th packet for you to see. Next is, we are looking for one or two council members, two at the most, but one for sure, to be part of the student commissioner interview teams. And we don't have times or dates set up. We'll make that work for whoever wants to volunteer. We don't need a volunteer tonight, but sometime in April we will. And that would hap, the interviews would happen in June. And that's all I've got.
Thank you. Councilmember Pierce.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of comments. I want to thank my colleagues, the staff, city staff, and the residents. I mentioned this a little bit earlier, but everybody who respectfully engages in the process, just want to say thank you. We appreciate that. We receive emails all the time, and we received some that, many of them are respectful and thoughtful. But we received some that were just not respectful at all. Over the past few weeks, we received one that called us gutless, one that said, "Look in the mirror, you are truly disgusting." Remember that one? And then we received one that called us environmental terrorists. And I'm like, wow, really? And I don't, I don't know, but are you aware of any terrorists that post their names, phone numbers, and home addresses on a website for the public record? I don't know of any.
Your first.
Yeah, that would be a first. Or a terrorist whose wife is actively involved in the community with the PTO, with Edina give-and-go, just giving back, volunteering, right? I don't know of any terrorist that does that. But I have to call that out, right? And I actually replied to each one of those emails to just say, hey, none of us are gutless, we're not terrorists. I understand that you're upset about something. And in this case, it was Weber Park. And I responded to each one of those and saying, hey, you want to chat, let's chat about it. I'm happy to share my view on why I took the vote that I did. None of them responded. But I did get one response from a resident, that one of those comments was even using an anonymous email address. And they want to call me gutless. But I responded to it. And I said, hey, I would offer, I would invite you personally to come to Jerry's to talk, but I don't know who you are. And so if you read this and you're interested, let me know. I'm happy to meet and talk about this. No response. But I did get one response. There was a fourth email, and this resident was clearly angry about Weber Park. And she and I exchanged, I made the offer, she just wanted to exchange. And we did that three or four times. And the final email from this resident said, "Thank you for acknowledging my anger in helping me work through it. We don't agree on the decision, but she understood how we came to the decision." But is accepting that she still doesn't agree with it, but respected the process. And that's, that's all I care about. I mentioned earlier, none of these decisions are yes, no, nobody's always right, nobody's wrong. But we have to engage in the dialogue in a respectful way in order to get anywhere. And so I appreciate, I'll close again with thanking my colleagues for having that, the debate, the city staff for the work that they do in that regard, and all the residents who are engaging respectfully in the process. You know my name, you have my email address. If anybody's interested after hearing this, just email me. I'm always happy to discuss my views on any topic. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for those observations. I have to say, I haven't sent back any of those emails. We're going to find out with Member Anderson. Who is he? What kind of dialogue?
I thank you for asking, because I have not taken the opportunity to do so. But beyond that, I have nothing more tonight. Thank you.
All right. Member Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I've responded to some of them. Some of the responses have been very thoughtful and some have not, even with an acknowledgement. So it's an interesting conversation. So we went to the National League of Cities, and I know our city manager's going to give us a report, but I wanted to give just a few real high-level comments. We went to lots of meetings. I want to thank Reece Karim, our former management fellow. Golly, she did a great job. We had such a nice time. Everything went smoothly. The president changed his schedule and came to speak on Monday. It was seamless. She rescheduled us without a hitch. Great, great event all around. Talked a lot about the infrastructure bill and about the American Rescue Plan Act funds. Got a lot of information on that. The one thing I wanted to highlight from the infrastructure bill is they're putting together something similar to the College Common App, so that communities don't have to have super sophisticated grant-writing abilities to access this money in the infrastructure fund. And I thought that was a really interesting innovation. I went to a green energy panel, and I'm going to talk with Coordinator Hancock about that. We talked about affordable housing, and I learned some interesting things. And it looks like airport noise might be coming back. So that's something- like airport noise might be coming back, so that's something that we want to engage with a former member, Brindle, on, because I think that that might be an issue again. They're looking at the air traffic controllers. But overall, it was a great trip. It was inspiring to go to the Lincoln Memorial at night and remember what this is all about. Both, in both of the real estate projects that we looked at this evening, we talked about underground parking and how that is seemingly infeasible, and I hope that that's something that we can readdress. It seems to be in a number of the area plans, and it's just awfully expensive, and especially where there's a high water table, so I'd like to revisit that on some level. We received an opioid report from our Community Health Commission. I read it, it was very thoughtfully done. The one question I have is, who's responsible for carrying this out? And I would appreciate, I mean, it's a great idea, but I don't know how complicated or who is responsible for these bins and administering this, whether it's private or public or both. And then finally, I received a call about this video that some high school students posted, and I think, Mr. Mayor, you're going to talk about this a little bit, but when we have these types of events, these incidents, where harmful things are said about members of our community based on their race or their religion or their minority status, it doesn't just harm the individuals who are in the video and depicted in the video, it harms the entire community. And this is what the HRC, the Human Rights and Relations Commission, was talking about with a hate incident, and it doesn't rise to the level of a crime, but it really does harm us all. And so I hope, I think we do have some plans to address this as a community, but I just wanted to acknowledge that we hope that these children, these teenagers, understand that there is a real harm, and it's a real harm, not just to individuals, but to our community, and we need some sort of reconciliation process. And with that, a great discussion, and thank you.
Thank you, Member Jackson. To that point about the video that's been discussed extensively and that has led to a conversation between the school district and the council, between the superintendent and your mayor and our city manager, April 14th, for those that are interested, April 14th is the date that we're going to have a community conversation. It's going to be from 5:30 to 8:30 at the Edina High School Cafeteria, and they're expecting probably 250 to 300 people there to talk about this issue. The superintendent and I spoke with a married couple today from the Islamic community, and it was, it was, it created a sinking feeling that when they said that their confidence and feeling that they were part of the community has been shaken by this event that happened in the basement of somebody's house with some kids, mocking Asian-American kids, and some girls there laughing, participating, and then doing a Nazi salute. So we're going to start this conversation, community-wise, that Member Pierce and the group that was involved in Race and Equity started several years ago. It's going to continue now, and April 14th. Please feel free to come to the high school and participate in that conversation, and we'll try to cover as much ground as we can. It's all very, very important. Glad to hear we had the pedestrian bridge issue resolved over the Crosstown. I've had a lot of calls about that, or people stopping me when I'm walking around Lake We had our second meeting of MN Heels 2.0, you remember that, is in the post, well, not post, during this time when we're dealing with auto-related crime, particularly carjackings and auto thefts. Our county attorney, Mike Freeman, has formed this group of probably about 40 people from a broad spectrum to look at the issue of both crime suppression now and then also the long-term strategies around helping some of these kids that are predominantly involved in the criminality. And so that's, the third meeting on that will be the end of April, and Chief Milburn and I and Manager Neil talked about that this morning, because they're looking for input now from suburban communities, is what we'd like to see. And then I've also had a conversation with some other leaders in the African-American community about what they'd like to see, so we'll continue to do that work, and I'll continue to report back to you on that as well. My notes from the leadership meeting for the U.S. Conference of Mayors, I noticed are part of the materials provided. I'm not going to go into any of that. If anybody has questions, feel free to contact me, to visit about any topic. And then I was pleased to hear about how the two of you enjoyed the National League of Cities meeting. I think it really has great value, and I hope you got to meet the dynamic leader of the National League of Cities, old Clarence, is really, what a special person he is. And then I wanted to just report on the last thing. The Edina Community Foundation had its annual Connecting with Kids Leadership Awards, I think it was a week ago Friday, and I wanted to read the names of these kids that got leadership awards that are involved in either predominantly, I guess, at Edina High School, some are in private schools too, but live in Edina. Lila Emerson and Claire Wegman-Crider, Edina Girls' Sports Summit Leaders. Dipia Guthakonda and Isabel Wagener, Edina Reads Writing Contest organizers. Sriutha Ratala, she's formed a coding camp for kids that she's, calls Camp Venom, and she's the creator of the camp, and it's filling up with grade-school kids. She's teaching how to code. It's pretty remarkable. Connor Kilalea, creative fundraiser for Second Harvest Heartland. Francesca Lichtenberger and Sabi Merza, the Edina Human Rights and Relations Commission members that are serving the city so well. Atman Jahagadar, for his covidedu.org website that he developed to help provide education around COVID, and now it's being published in several different languages. Atman has told me that his, I sat with him and his parents, and he's following his brother, Om Jahagadar, out to Stanford, so he's been admitted at Stanford, and he'll join his brother out there, and his parents will obviously keep on working. And then Sakith Budedetti and Kedar Samhadri for the Hornet Mentor Connections Organizer Program that they put together, and these kids are, these young people, I should say, are just doing remarkable work. They remind me so much of James Pierce's kids, and Olivia in particular, there's a lot of Olivas in there. So that's it for me, and did that cause anybody else to think of anything that they wanted to talk about? Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
Second.
Got a motion to adjourn, Member Jackson, second by Member Pierce. Any further discussion? Those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Are aye opposed? Carry. Stand adjourned. Quite good.